Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. And could someone please close those doors when the last person gets in, please? Because I hear an echo out there. These are the following bills that we are going to hear today. The first one is 24-0474, Acquisition of Property Block 6990, Lots 1 through 7, and Block 6991, Lots 1 to 26, and the bed of Woodhouse Avenue. The next three bills will be heard basically all together because they're on the same subject. That's Bill Number 23-0444, Charter Amendment for Inner Harbor Park. Bill Number 23-0446, Zoning C-5 IH Inner Harbor Subdivision Amendment. And Bill Number 23-0448, that's the Urban Renewal Inner Harbor Project 1 Amendment 21. In attendance today on the committee, we have Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Mark Conway of the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District. And Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And we also have with us Councilman Z. Cohen of the First District. The first bill is in the First District. Any other council members? Representatives from the Office of the President. We have Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director for the Legislative Department. We have Dexter Lockamy, Director of Finance and Budget of the President's Office. And we have representatives of the Office of the Mayor. I see Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. And behind us. And Marvin James is also with us, Chief of Staff from the Office of the Mayor as And also staff to this committee, Anthony Levy, that has just been so helpful. Okay. As part of the day's proceedings, please remember, all attendees are asked to be civil and refrain from personal references to members of the committee or other speakers. Turn off or silence your cellphone or any electronic device. Today's hearing will begin with reports from city agencies and invited organizations, followed by questions from the committee, and then testimony from the public. If you wish to testify, please sign up on the sheets in the back. And then we also have some prepared sheets of people that said that they would testify and emailed us early, so this is all a part of what's going on. Also, members of the public here to testify will be called to the lectern in the order in which they have signed up, and will receive two minutes to testify. Be ready and concise with your remarks. And if you, if some of the remarks that you make and you hear someone else has basically said the same thing that you have said, you don't have to testify, repeat that again. So please, limit your remarks to two minutes. Please be ready and concise, again, with your remarks. The committee will only be accepting testimony in person today, as I also stated when these bills were given a date to be heard. If you have any testimony or materials you wish to send to the committee, you may do so via the City Council website, or if you, if anyone in person would also want to give us things in writing, please, you can give it to Tony directly or myself, and we'll make sure it becomes a part of today's file. During this hearing, all participants are expected to abide by these proceedings. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Comments should be addressed to the Chair. There will be no interruptions of reports, testimony, or presentations. Anyone engaging in disruptive behavior may be asked to leave the chambers. And so we'll now begin with Bill Number 24-0474, and again, that's the Acquisition of Property Block 6990, Lots 1 through 7, and Block 6991, Lots 1 to 26, and the bed of Woodhouse Avenue. As I mentioned earlier, please put your phones on silent or turn them off. This bill was introduced on January 28, 2024. The bill was sponsored by City Council President on behalf of the administration. And as I mentioned, this is in the First District. And Councilman Cohen, would you, do you have some comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I do not sit on this committee and will need to leave after this hearing, but I do want to thank you for holding this important hearing about the Center Place Land Acquisition. The St. Helena community is frequently overlooked. It straddles both the city and the county line. As such, investments in public infrastructure tend to be lacking. This project has been promised to this community for over 15 years. This has been a long-awaited project for folks, also in the surrounding communities, that are anxious to see this bridge between city and county finally built, so that all the truck traffic from the Port of Baltimore no longer runs through our communities. This bill represents a project with many years of history and strong community support. There are several letters of support for this bill that have been submitted and made available for commission review. I want to thank Comptroller Henry and his office for their support. I want to thank Baltimore County Executive Johnny Olszewski, who has really leaned into this project, Mayor Brandon Scott, and I really want to thank Shirley Gregory and the community leaders from the St. Helena community, who have done what community leaders are supposed to do, which is push to get this project accomplished. This bill also represents collaboration at its best with our neighbors in the city and the county. Regionalism is important here in Baltimore. This bill is the product of countless hours of engagement with and participation by the county executive, as well as our team here in the city. So with that, Madam Chair, I thank you for hearing 24-0474, and look forward to bill reports.
Thank you, Councilman. I remember this issue had been really present for a very long time, all the way back to Councilman Jim Kraft. I remember the committee taking a tour back then of that area and just letting, you know, just updating the council on how serious this issue was, and finally glad it's coming to fruition. And on that note, we'll now hear agency representatives, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, we would approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. There you are hiding in the corner over there. Thank you, Hillary. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We do stand by our bill report in support of the legislation for the reasons outlined by Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Liam. Department of Real Estate.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Bullock, and members of the committee. Christine Griffin with the Comptroller's Office on behalf of the Department of Real Estate. And we stand by our favorable report of City Council Bill 240474. I was going to make additional comments, but the councilmen covered most of what I was going to say, just reiterating the collaborative nature of this. We've worked on this bill for a very, very, very long time, and the surrounding community has also been working on this for far too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Estimates. That doesn't have to be a part of this bill, okay. Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, good afternoon. Matt DeSantis, Planning Department. The Planning Commission heard this bill at its February 8 hearing and recommended favorably Planning Stan's biased report.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions on this bill? Let's check for public testimony. Ms. Shirley Gregory, did you sign up on the sheet? Okay. You can come up to the lectern. State your name, where you're from, and press the button. Just thank you.
Thank you. My name is Shirley Gregory. I am the President of the St. Helena Community Association. I have lived in St. Helena for over 28 years. Sorry, my throat's bothering me today. Unfortunately, with St. Helena, we're statute right next to the Port of Baltimore, and the Port of Baltimore's traffic cuts through our community every single day. And it just doesn't get, I would like to say it slows down, but it doesn't. One day, I stood on a corner on Riverview Avenue and Ross Avenue, right where this road is hopefully to go through, and I videotaped over 75 cars coming through my community in two minutes. So that was just a small glimpse into what we go through. They just don't cut up one road. They find any way they can to go through our community. The actual property owner, Mr. Robinson, who owns the truck lot that we're trying to have this road go through, has not cared for the property. And over the 28 years that I have lived in this community, it is just a gravel lot. Dirt flies everywhere. They go in and out all night long. Their trucks run all night long, and there's houses parked right across the street from this truck lot. So the homes that are there can't even open their windows on a nice day because of the dust from the truck lot. Sorry. Anyway, besides that, he also has, spills oil all over the lot from the trucks. The truck drivers urinate on the lot. And then at one time, they had actually gotten an electrified fence and put around the whole property without a permit. And then we had to take him to court to have that electrified fence taken down because there's children playing right across the street. So this would mean a great deal to our community if this road could go through. And I have actually been working on this project since 2001. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. And looking at the sheet, I'm going to call off some names because you might have signed your name on the wrong bill, just to make sure that Ms. Gregory, right now, is the only person for this community. But, okay, looking at this, I think these people are for the next bill, but I want to make sure. Jermaine Jones?
He's outside.
Okay. I'm sure it's the next bill. What is this? Mike Mayer?
Nick Mayer.
Nick Mayer. Is Nick Mayer in here?
Nick, I'm sorry, the next bill.
Then, okay. I'm sure he's the next bill.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Is there anyone else in here that wants to testify on this bill, this present? Okay. Okay. So make note, Ms. Gregory is the only one, and we just want to look online just to make sure. Okay, there are nine. Any questions from committee? Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable? So moved by Dorsey. Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're going to recess just for about a minute, so agencies that aren't involved in the next three bills can be dismissed, and others that are coming can sit in those open seats. I will read them together so they can be discussed together, but they will be voted on separately. Agencies should please address all bills that they have been referred to in their Bill Number 23-0444, Charter Amendment, Inner Harbor Park Charter Amendment, for the purpose of amending the provision dedicating for public park use the portions of the city that lies along the northwest and south shores of the Inner Harbor, south of Pratt Street to the water's edge, east of Light Street to the water's edge, and north of Key Highway to the water's edge, from the World Trade Center around the shoreline of the Inner Harbor, and including Rashfield to permit multifamily residential development and off-street parking within the dedicated boundaries of the Inner Harbor Park, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Also, Bill Number 23-0446, Zoning C-5 IH Inner Harbor Subdistrict Amendment, for the purpose of amending the description C-5 IH Inner Harbor Subdistrict, and amending the bulk and yard regulations for the subdistrict. And Bill Number 23-0448, Urban Renewal Inner Harbor Project 1 Amendment 21, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Inner Harbor Project 1, amending the development area, controls for certain development areas, amending the land use and proposed zoning exhibits to the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. These bills were introduced on October 30 of 2023. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Costello of the 11th District. Councilman Costello does have an opening statement and will speak to community engagement and the approval process for this redevelopment. And he has stepped away for a minute, second. So I'm not going to move forward until, oh, here he comes. I know personally that Councilman Costello has been really working on these bills that he introduced back in October, and it's just been a continuation of feedback that has come to my office as Chair and also Councilman Costello's office, as well as the President's office. And we're now at the point that these bills are coming to our committee, and it's, it is strictly a zoning process. And from this point, at this point, you can take it over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for holding today's hearings. First, we've had a very extensive community engagement process to date, and I want to quickly highlight what's occurred. Back in May of 20, starting in May of 2023, there was an open forum for all community associations and community development corporations across the city of Baltimore. There was a wide-scale forum in June at the Reginald L. Lewis Museum, another one in August at the Waxter Center in Mount Vernon, another one in September at Harbor Place at the Pavilion on Pratt Street, another one in November at Coppin State University. I hosted one myself with Mr. Bramble and his team. We had about 230 residents attend at the National Federation for the Blind in Riverside. There was another one in December that the mayor hosted at the Middle Branch Fitness Center, the new facility in Cherry Hill. I hosted another one in January at the Maryland Science Center. We had about 120 residents attend that. And there was one in February in North Baltimore, and there's going to be more forums on this. So one, I want to thank the project team for the outreach that has been done with communities all across the city. I had an opportunity to go door-knocking with folks in West Baltimore, specifically in Heritage Crossing, which is in the 11th District. I know most of the folks over there, but a lot of them were surprised to see me and asked, what are you doing here, talking about a project in the Inner Harbor that has nothing to do with us? And quite the contrary. I think this was about creating an opportunity for people all across our city to be able to have input on something that belongs to everyone in the city. I want to quickly touch on what these three bills do, and you're going to hear more from the Law Department and the Department of Planning, which are really going to talk about the specifics, but there's three bills. There's an amendment to the C-5 IH zoning classification, which removes the height restriction of 100 feet to unlimited. There are some amendments to the existing URP, or Urban Renewal Plan, for the Inner Harbor. Those remove some development controls, reclassify certain development areas within the urban renewal plan. And finally, there's a charter amendment. This area of the city is unique, and that it's the only area within the city geographically that has additional provisions for the Inner Harbor that are outlined in the city charter. So there's essentially three layers of controls that dictate what can and cannot happen in the Inner Harbor. And the charter amendment essentially expands the ground leased area from 3.2 to 4.5 acres, and it provides some clarifications around commercial uses, which are already permitted in state code. So you'll hear more from our city agencies, who are on the experts, who are the experts on these matters. I also want to say a couple of things. There's been a lot of information that's been shared about this project. One of the things that I've found very interesting and exciting about this project, what's been proposed, is the level of interest from residents all across the city, whether you love it, you hate it, you're not sure. Folks are interested in what could potentially happen here. And there's a couple of rumors that I want to dispel. First, these three companion bills shall not permit any type of additional development south of the intersection of East Conway Street and Light Street, period. Under no circumstances do these bills change existing conditions in the urban renewal plan, in the zoning code, in the city charter, or anywhere else in city code to allow for things to be built in West Shore Park or in Rashfield. That is not being permitted today. I want to be very clear on that, and when our good folks from the Law Department testify, I'm going to ask them to put their name on that and co-sign that statement, which the city solicitor has done at previous public forums, but I think it's important for everyone to hear. Two, I think it's important to note that while the underlying land is owned by the mayor and City Council of Baltimore, the structures that exist on top of it, those structures are privately owned. Originally, they were privately owned by the Rouse Company, and the successor and the successor, up to Ashkenazi. And those private properties, those structures, were conveyed privately to another landowner. And I think that's important context as we have the conversation today, because there's been a lot of discussion about, well, should there have been an RFP? Could the city put out an RFP? And I would pose the question, the city owned the underlying land, and there was a ground lease, such as is the case for some homeowners in Baltimore City, would it be right for the city to put out an RFP on something that you owned? So I think that's really important context. Again, Madam Chair, I'm looking forward to... to a very lively and courteous discussion about a topic that I know is of great interest to everyone far beyond these chambers and across the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
I'll repeat that. Does any committee members have any direct questions or comments to the sponsor before we move to agency reports? And seeing none, oh, you do direct... Okay, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question actually isn't for the sponsors. It's for you, Madam Chair. Just could you give us a... Maybe I missed it. An overview of how you see the hearing proceeding from here. We've had varied kind of circumstances from one hearing to the next over the course of the term, just in terms of when you want committee members to engage and not. Sometimes we engage with people giving testimony and sometimes we don't. I just wanted to get some sense of kind of the guardrails that you see here, Madam Chair.
You must have missed the beginning of my statement, but I did say that the committee will only accept testimony in person today. And that was stated at the introduction of the bill date as well. And so where the committee is listening to testimony, but you're not going... There's no response. We're listening to testimony. That's added to the testimony that we're also going to be getting from the agencies. Did that clarify what you're asking?
Kind of, I think. The committee is going to hear from others, but not speak, essentially.
We're hearing... We're following our basic rules of this committee, and that's hearing from the agencies and then listening to the testimony to make our decisions as we move forward. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see that some of the bill reports request some amendments. I don't know that they were given to us.
There... I think there are some technical amendments and we're going to get those in writing shortly. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there are technical amendments. I've worked in coordination with the Department of Planning and with the Department of Law. One set of those amendments addresses the URP bill. And that's in coordination with planning. The other set of amendments addresses the charter amendment, and that was done in coordination with the Law Department. DLR is putting the finishing touches on having those drafted up. And those will be delivered to council members shortly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we'll see them today.
So you are going to hear about the amendments and you are going to get them in writing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on to the committees? And as I mentioned earlier, when I call the agency representative, please, you know, talk on all three bills, have the discussion, and make sure you let the committee know which bills you're making your statements on. Because we're, instead of going back, you know, one bill after the other, once you're called, just talk about all three bills, one after the other, to get your statements. And then we'll take questions as we, you know, as needed from the committee. So we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Yes, musical.
Move back over there, okay.
Musical chairs. Okay, Hillary Rulie from the Law Department. So addressing all three bills, I'm going to go in reverse order. 230448 is the urban renewal plan. And we approve that bill for form and legal sufficiency. Same with 230446. That is a change to the text of the city zoning code. So it's not specific to a particular property. It's changing the requirements for an entire district. And again, we approve that bill for form and legal sufficiency. And bill 230444 is a change to a section in Article 1 of the city's charter. And the original first reader draft grouped the multifamily dwellings and their associated parking in with permissible public conveniences that go in a park. And public conveniences in the park have a particular definition under Maryland law. So we just wanted to be clear, the Law Department's whole recommendation and legal requirement here is to make clear that a parking lot serving a residential building would not be a public convenience in the same way as a restaurant or a shop because one permits public access and the other one may not. So that's the gist of that. Our amendment's attached to our bill report, but I've worked with the councilmen to make sure that an amendment that better conveys what the intent is here was drafted. And I can just simply say that the amendment that, I guess, is still being printed would make it clear that, you know, the inside of the person's residential home is not part of a park. I think that's pretty obvious to everyone, but that makes it clear. But then it says that both the residences plus their associated parking, plus all shops and restaurants and other actual public conveniences, both the park-type uses and the non-park-type uses, cannot exceed 4.5 acres and don't go south of Conway Street. So it appears that we have Inner Harbor Park in our charter for the sole reason... We don't have many of our other parks in there, but for the sole reason to purposely restrict ourselves from using all of it with buildings on it, essentially preserving a lot of it as open space. And so what this charter amendment would do is continue to preserve pretty much all of it as open space, but it adds a little bit of extra footprint for residential and its associated parking. But it caps the total combined area to be the development plus what you have now for shops, restaurants, whatever. So even though that's not legally required, that was the intent that the Law Department's original amendment didn't get at. We try not to make policy. And instead, we're just rectifying the legal issue we see. And so even though the Law Department's amendment would be legal, the amendment proposed by the council member is... Both covers the legal issue and puts back in that self-restriction to make it quite clear that this particular area, this particular park cannot exceed... I think the number now is 4.5, total acres of development. And it's clear that some of that development is what you expect in a park. Restaurants, shops, other parts of that development aren't obviously dedicated for park use, like someone's home. So the amendments you'll be getting should accomplish both that legal requirement and then the policy that the council member was seeking to implement. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Hillary. So there's that one amendment for bill number 23-0444, the charter amendment. And then there's going to be an amendment for 23-0448.
Yes, and that's an urban renewal amendment. That one is one that I believe Planning is going to speak to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Hillary at this time before we move on to the Department of Transportation? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did find some amendments in the hearing packet. This is what you're adjusting or you're getting a new one?
You're getting a new one.
Okay. Then I'll wait to see that one. And just to be clear, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, the 4.5 acres of the property is supposed to be public property.
No, no. That's what is kind of confusing about the way that this charter amendment is worded. Under Maryland law, someone's private residence couldn't be dedicated as a park. We can't just like decide that your house is a park. So we wanted to make it clear in the charter that the private residences aren't dedicated for public use. But the 4.5 is a cap on both. Those things dedicated for public use, like restaurants, shops, and the private development so that they never combined exceed 4.5 acres, nor do they go past the line that's already in the charter of south of Conway Street, you know, Rashfield, whatever. So even though that's not legally required, the city's always sort of restricted itself to a maximum amount of developed area. And I'm just making up that term. Here, it would be both developed for private use because this, obviously, these are private buildings. And then for uses where the public can come into them, private or accessible to the public. And it doesn't sound a lot like park property, but under Maryland law, a park can include things like restaurants and shops because the public can access them. What we can't do as a government is dedicate someone's private home to be a public park. So we just had to make that technical correction. But both, any development, whether it's dedicated for public use or is someone's private home, the maximum cap was 4.5 in the amendment that the council member is proposing.
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up for the sponsor, given what we just heard. My understanding of the project was that it's 4.5 acres. And then the footprint, which we may be talking about later in one of the other bills, is the different... There's a... The current footprint of where the pavilions are and then the change is going to be about another 1.3. So the charter amendment basically is outlining the entire footprint, but the development is only going to occur and is only going to be private in some of it.
So the footprint of what has been proposed is approximately 2,000 square feet less than the existing footprint of the sum of the Pratt Street and Light Street pavilions. That said, there is a slide that will be displayed after the agencies provide their presentations, which I think you've seen before, but we'll put it up again, which will provide some clarification on those footprints. And there's a visual that does a much better job of illustrating it than I can explain it of the change in that acreage.
What I'm just asking is making sure that there are guardrails within these bills and the charter amendment in particular that that area has, you know, the charter amendment allows for residential, commercial, et cetera. But we've got a commitment to making sure that most of that 4.5 acres, if not all of it, except for the 100... You know, 1.3 acres is going to be public land, dedicated public land that you can't develop on.
Yeah, so I think it's important to note that all of the ground-level uses are going to be public. There's not going to be any private uses around there. And I think that the graphic that I mentioned earlier is... will really help kind of illustrate, you know, the plan and the layout for, you know, the entire area.
I understand. What I'm asking is, given that the boxes that we're going to see on that graphic are the boxes that we've agreed to or that, you know, has been the proposal for the project, that outside of those boxes is public land?
Yes, that's correct.
And how do we know that that's like an enforceable thing? Like they can't develop outside of those boxes?
Because it's in the city charter.
So that's what this amendment does, is it solidifies what that is?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll get more from the presentation from the project team. Oops, sorry. Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and rest of the community members. My name is Corinne Johnson. I'm the Director for the Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Referencing Council Bill 230446, this one, of course, speaks to removing the height restrictions. And it also talks about allowing for mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development. And of course, with DOT, we are focused on providing safe and accessible and comfortable pedestrian facilities throughout the city. We will be engaged in this review process through the existing processes, such as the formal site plan review process and our traffic mitigation program. And so for this bill, we had no objection. For Council Bill 23044 regarding the Inner Harbor Park, this one also seeks to amend the charter. With it, it would still go through the normal process for Baltimore City DOT. There wasn't a major impact on us for this bill specifically. So again, we had no objection. And then finally, for Council Bill 230448, this one seeks to make amendments to the existing Inner Harbor renewal plan. And so with this one, most notable for DOT is, of course, the modification of some of the existing parcel boundaries. And so from our standpoint, we're not really focused on the internal aspects of it. But of course, that does kind of fall into areas that we're responsible for, the public right-of-way, that are butting the parcels. And so I know some of the comments have been about the Light Street slip lane there that separates McKeldin Plaza. So with this, traffic analysis of the Inner Harbor area is going to be proposed. And this would include any considerations for this project, as well as any potential changes that are coming through the area, the Inner Harbor area with the red line. And so we plan to take a full assessment of that. So right now, for this Council Bill, again, there's no objection for it. And we know that we'll be engaged in future traffic analysis through different steps and some of the steps that we're going to take ourselves to do some robust analysis of the area.
Thank you. Committee, any questions to Transportation at this point? Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Has Transportation developed any plans itself for the redesign of Light Street, Pratt Street, or the elimination of the Calvert Street spur?
No, we have not.
None yet. Does Transportation have a plan to do this, regardless of whether this development goes forward?
Right now, we're focused on just developing, focused on the traffic study. I can't speak to specifics if we would look at making those changes and when. Again, we're considering the red line as well and how that's going to affect the area. So there's a lot of moving parts and I guess future decisions to be made.
So you're saying if this development doesn't move forward, we're not necessarily going to make the kind of changes that are being presented in the renderings?
No, I'm not saying that.
But we're not? But we haven't moved forward to plan any of that?
We're not at that stage.
Do we have any funding at all to do any of it?
Not right now. Right now, we're isoling the funding for the full traffic analysis.
And so we... Do we have any sense at all of the kind of traffic impacts, not just for driving, but other modes of transportation that will come from the introduction of vehicles for 900 new dwelling units on Light Street?
Again, really, the specifics of that will come through all that analysis and also through the traffic mitigation process with the developer.
Thank you.
And reminder, we're at the beginning stages of the process. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Mase from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. I'm here on behalf of Executive Director Peter Little, who couldn't make it today. We stand by our bill report on Council Bill 230448, the Inner Harbor Renewal Plan Amendment, where we respectfully request a favorable report on this bill. And just to note about the report that we encourage the developer and the owner to consider shared parking arrangements.
Can you speak up just a little?
I'm sorry. We encourage the developer and the owner to consider shared parking arrangements to help minimize vehicular congestion and focus improvements on the walkability of the site. Thank you.
Any questions to the Parking Authority? Planning Commission.
Hi, Chris Rar, Director of Department of Planning. The bills were referred to both the Planning Commission and the Office of Sustainability. So Caitlin Aldette from our Urban Design Section will present the bill reports from the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Caitlin Aldette with the Planning Department. The Planning Commission heard all three bills, that it's a December 21 hearing, and recommended approval at that time. For Bill 23-0448, which is the Amendment 21 to the Urban Renewal Plan, there were a number of minor technical amendments that have been included with the bill package that Councilman Costello was printing off.
Okay. Any questions to the Planning? Yes, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is actually not for Planning, it's for Parking Authority. So I was curious about parking plans, noting, right now, I haven't heard all that much around what our plan is for parking.
Can you speak up or bring it a little closer?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Noting that we're still figuring out what plans are for parking. One of the things I want to be very careful about is that we don't end up with parking garages on the waterfront. So can you speak to the limitations within the, any of the three bills around parking and what is allowed? I'm not sure if you can speak to that, or if maybe Planning would be able to speak to that.
I can speak to this a little bit. For the Planning Commission item, we did reach out to the Parking Authority and asked that they, so the Planning Commission met twice. The first time was in early December. Unfortunately, the hybrid connection wasn't working, so we met again on the 21st, and that is when the Commission made their recommendation. But at the first hearing on, actually, November 30th, members of the public and the Commission asked some questions about parking in the vicinity. And so in the interim between the two hearings, we asked the Parking Authority for some information about parking in the vicinity. Would that be helpful to know?
I think my major concern here that I want to make sure we don't end up with is parking garages. Now, I understand the intention of the developers not to do that, but I want to make sure that those restrictions are considered within these bills, such that we don't end up with a parking garage in any number of years on the waterfront.
So one of the things that the Parking Authority provided us was that there is a plethora of parking downtown already. And so the, quite a few parking garages exist in the vicinity that have lots of availability, both on weekdays and weekends and an evening. They kind of provide us a breakdown of all three of those times, both for on-street capacity, on-street availability, off-street capacity and off-street availability. Additionally, C5, which is the zoning category for downtown, has a number of restrictions on the types of construction, how that construction meets the ground plane. So even if there is a parking garage, it has to be basically fully wrapped with either storefronts or residential, whatever it might be. And there has to be a certain amount of window space. There's a percentage. So the new zoning code, which went into effect in 2017, took into account some of what we, lessons learned along Lombard Street, for example, to help reduce any issues that there might be if a parking garage is introduced. Yeah, so I hope that answers a question.
Got it. If I can summarize, what I'm understanding is, we believe that there's plenty of parking in the area that's currently unutilized. And if that is insufficient for our needs, there are restrictions on the type of parking that could be included in the project. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm, pursuant to the urban renewal plan, any parking has to either be underground or hidden from view, correct?
That's correct.
And as a follow-up question of the Parking Authority, just thinking about several above-ground parking assets that exist on the Light Street and Pratt Street corridor. Do we have a general estimate of the number of parking spaces that are currently available within a certain proximity to this site?
Right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm sorry. Do we have a estimate of the number of above-ground parking spaces that are, or garage parking spaces that are available within a certain proximity of the site?
Right. We did the analysis on behalf of Planning.
Pull that, pull that closer.
I'm sorry. We did the analysis to answer the question that Planning brought to us about how many spaces are available. And what we looked at is in a, is in a walk shed around the Inner Harbor area, how many spaces are, you know, what's the capacity of parking? And then looking at demand at any, you know, at like a weekday demand, and then like evening, weekend demand. And the total number is over 13,000 spaces available, I'm sorry, capacity. And then for, in terms of how much is available at any time, during evenings and weekends, there would be about 9,000 spaces available.
Okay, so there's about 13,000 parking spaces within walking distance.
Yes.
And at any given time on the evening or a weekend, there's about 9,000 of those spaces are not utilized.
Yes.
So they're available. And then what about during the weekdays?
So there would be fewer available during weekdays because of the, you know, obviously the employment center downtown. So there might be about 3,000 to 4,000 available during the weekday.
Still 3,000 to 4,000 available during the weekday.
And these are, these are estimates based on what we can put together.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, and it sounds like that you're, it's some collaboration and discussions as far as parking is concerned that's being continued. Did you want to comment, Chris?
Yes, and if I may add, when the Office of Sustainability speaks, parking on the waterfront in a floodplain has its own challenges that we can discuss in that report.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The urban renewal plan has that it's adding back in, the bill is adding back in, off-street parking is permitted, we're expressly approved by the department, and providing off-street parking is not, is not located at grade and is screened from public view. So that's going to be added in, which means that at some point in time there will be parking there. Is that just the plan right now, and I guess maybe this is for the sponsor, is for the residential to have the parking?
That doesn't mean that there will be parking there. That means that the protection will exist within the urban renewal plan.
The protection that it has to be screened?
If, if parking were to exist, it would have to either be underground or screened in, correct?
That's not what this says. It says, provided that off-street parking is not located at grade, oh, that's what that means. At grade means making sure that it's underground. Got it, okay. The second question I had related to this particular bill is around the urban design, the UDAP, and I don't know if you can answer this, or if the Director can answer this. But it does put in specific language, because the other language is outdated, about the review using UDAP. And again, to just clarify, that UDAP is a review process, a peer review process. And I'm wondering if there's any examples in other urban renewal plans, I pulled up the ones that are in my district and it's not in there, whether or not there's a little bit sort of a stronger requirement that some of the suggestions of UDAP have to be incorporated.
Yeah, so the bill, when it came in, per the sponsor, included the reference to UDAP in place of the Ad Hoc Advisory Task Force.
Yeah.
And the Planning Commission, at that time, when we reviewed this, requested that that be, so staff agreed that UDAP was not the best choice here, because UDAP is not a public hearing. It's a pub, you know, it's, the public can view it, but there's no public testimony allowed. So the Planning Commission agreed with staff recommendation that it be replaced with something else. And that is going to be decided upon at a later date and may be included in the amendments. I'm not sure.
Oh, so, okay, so UDAP is going to be struck from this, I'm sorry, I didn't see that in the report, but that, okay, is going to be struck from here?
That's correct. And there would be another, so we had, staff had recommended that it be replaced to just include all preliminary and final development plans have to go through all required development reviews, which would include Planning Commission, design review, site plan review committee, and all the environmental reviews. And I think everybody wanted something a little bit more specific. And so the task was to come up with that more specific language. And I believe that has yet to be completed.
But it's coming, in the amendments that we're supposed to see sometime today.
Yes. But, so in short, the thinking here is that while UDAP hearings are open to the public, in that, you know, they're, they're subject to Open Meetings Act, and the public can view them, they can attend them, they can't participate in that process. So you will see the amendments shortly, but this will require it to go to Planning Commission, which is, Planning Commission is required to take public input. So I, you know, but if we can, if we could defer on the items related to the amendments until they're available for us, and then that would be helpful.
Note well taken. But there was discussion at both Planning Commission meetings on the same subject.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I want to ask for a little more clarification on a couple of points here. I want to be clear and on the record, UDAP is a board of architectural and design professionals and the Planning Commission is not. Is that correct?
The UDAP is the Urban Design and Architectural Advisory Panel, and that is made up of architects. Planning Commission is a nine-member group, which includes, I want to say, six citizen appointees by the mayor, which are confirmed by the city council.
Five, six?
Five or six.
Five plus the chair, yeah.
Five plus the chair. And then there are two other representatives that the mayor makes, which do not require council confirmation. One is from the mayor's office, and one is from the Department of Public Works. Ms. Collins is my colleague. And that's due to the size of the capital budget for the Department of Public Works, I believe. And then finally, there is a member elected by the city council. In that case, this term, that is me. Prior to that, it was Councilman Ed Risinger. So that's a nine-person panel. I can't speak to the professions of the others. I can definitively say that I am not an architect.
Right. So to be clear, UDAP is a board that is specifically, or a panel that is specifically architectural and urban design professionals, and that if we're not undertaking to require approval by that, then there is no board or panel to review that is specifically architectural and urban design professional approval.
So again, I think it would be beneficial to wait until the amendments are here to discuss in detail, but UDAP's not being struck. And again, UDAP is a panel of architects, but going to UDAP does not permit public participation in the process. So if, if at all possible, if we could just hold on the amendments until the amendments are delivered to chambers, I think that would be the most efficient process.
Yes, that's, well noted, and that will be granted. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, my other question on clarification is here, our representative from Planning Commission talked about interior parking being hidden above grade, and certainly there are cases where that's hidden by other retail or other office uses outside of the parking area. But the sponsor used the term screening, and that's something else altogether that I'm familiar with, that isn't usage between the parking lot and the exterior. It's simply screening, essentially some sort of decorative wall along the exterior of a building. It's not.
So, yeah, the language, the screening is direct from the urban renewal plan. But there are layers of requirements. And one of those layers is just in the zoning code, which has those, which references the design manual and has requirements about amount of windows that have to be on the ground floor in C5 and along specific primary streets that are identified in the downtown corridor. So there are kind of layers of protection. And what the screening is required within the urban renewal plan, other layers are located in other parts of the city documents. So I was referring to some other elements that are required but are not under discussion today.
And, and so in any of the discussion with Planning Commission, was there any indication that there is any intent or expectation that any part of the residential parking for this site would be met off-site as opposed to onsite? I don't know of any development where you have this kind of density of development where the parking is expected to be met off-site?
That was not discussed at Planning Commission.
And was there any presentation of a sense of the kind of square footage, floor by floor, that would be necessary to meet the kind of parking that might be expected at this site if it were to all be, or substantially be designed and constructed above grade? How many floors that might take up?
The specific development was not discussed, just the, just the zoning bills.
That information comes later. It's not in this process.
The one thing we did do is remove a parking requirement, which is, which was in the urban renewal plan. So now it would just be the underlying zoning. And the underlying zoning does not have a maximum requirement. So there is no required parking per zoning. And we, there is, there was in the urban renewal plan, a requirement for a specific amount of parking. And I believe Planning Commission, one of the amendments was to remove that parking requirement.
To remove a minimum?
Yes.
But not to impose a maximum?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Was there anything you'd like to add? You did say the, something about the Office of Sustainability?
Yes, but I did want to summarize the Councilman's. There's no minimum, there's no maximum in this amendment. But we do have the Director of the Office of Sustainability too, if you want that bill report now.
Yes.
Ava Richardson.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. Ava Richardson, Director of the Office of Sustainability. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. In our bill report, we express that the Office of Sustainability takes climate risk and threats into consideration as a city is continuously exploring strategies, policies, and legislation and other innovations to support a vision for making Baltimore a resilient city whose daily activities reflect a commitment shared by all who work, live, play in Baltimore City, or, and to reduce or eliminate the impacts from future hazards, especially those exacerbated by climate change. In our bill report, we outline specific climate-related threats that the city faces that are detailed in our 2023 Disaster Preparedness Plan. This is a FEMA-mandated plan that qualifies the city for particular disaster preparedness and hazard mitigation funding across the city. In that report, we highlight the latest research data and analysis as it relates to flooding, sea level rise, and coastal hazards risk. We also highlight specific recommendations from a report entitled Baltimore Inner Harbor Promenade Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flooding. In those recommendations, we call attention to specific climate-related and coastal sea level rise, as well as flooding risk in the Inner Harbor, as well as across the city. Our recommendations focus specifically on regulatory matters that we want to make sure are captured in the urban renewal plan bill, and that includes removing potential parking requirements, but also ensuring that any parking facilities do not run in contrary to the National Flood Insurance Program and those regulations. We support the bill, and we, we are favorable to the bill and suggest that those amendments take place. And I also do just want to highlight that we are really excited for this opportunity for waterfront investment. In any development that takes place across the city, we really hope that it takes and considers the compounding risk associated with coastal development, including sea level rise, the damages from coastal flooding, as well as storm surges, that are all exacerbated by climate change. We stand by our report and are happy to answer any questions in regards to our amendments or the report overall.
Thank you. Moving on to housing and community development.
Good afternoon. Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner for Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development. I'll start with Bill, Council Bill 23-0444, the Charter Amendment for Inner Harbor Park. The department stands by our favorable bill report. Next, the City Council Bill 23-0446, the zoning related to, related to the Inner Harbor Sub District Amendment. We stand behind our favorable bill report. And finally, rounding out with City Council Bill 23-0448, related to the urban renewal plan, we stand by the favorable bill report as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this point from the committee for housing? Moving on to the BMZA.
Madam Chair, Tyler Chanel from the mayor's office. The BMZA stands by its bill reports for all bills.
Thank you. BDC, which is the Baltimore Development Corporation? BDC, which is the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Colin Tarver, President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation. I'll start with Bill Number 23-004, Charter Amendment for Inner Harbor Park. BDC stands by its bill report, and we support this bill. Bill Number 23-0448, the Urban Renewal Plan, Inner Harbor Project 1, Amendment 21. BDC stands by its report and is in favor of this bill. And I do not believe we were actually referred the final bill, 0444. I may have gotten a little mixed up. But we also are in support of that bill as well, which is the Charter Amendment for Inner Harbor Park. We're excited about the development and stand by the bills and ask for your favorable vote.
Thank you, Colin. Any questions to BDC? Moving forward to the Office of Equity.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Council members, committee members. My name is Dana Peterson-Moore. I am here on behalf of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights and in the capacity as the city's chief equity officer, here to report only on 23-0444, as that's the only bill that was referred to us. Having applied equity lens to that charter amendment, our position is that we are favorable and in support of the bill. And of note, would like to note for the record that we were most pleased by the fact that although the plans add some public, some private uses, the plans actually increase the amount of public space and maintain the harbor's history and of use of accessibility and forward-facing to the harbor. So we're very pleased with the bill and support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions to the Office of Equity? Hearing done. Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. The department was assigned only one of the bills, City Council Bill 23-448. That's the Urban Renewal Plan, the Inner Harbor Project 1, Amendment 21. We reviewed the bill and found that because of the age of the urban renewal, there were obviously some changes that had to be made to the plan, which are not unusual for urban renewal plans. We were looking at utilizing the underlying zoning rather than what had been traditionally put in, and had removed some height restrictions based on the underlying zoning. The development parcels that have private buildings on them, there are two parcels plus a third, and these have certain setbacks within these parcels that reflect the shape of the current buildings. So as a result, those changes had to be recognized in the urban renewal plan, that those shapes may have to have some slight adjustments based on what may go forward, and they will also have to have similar setbacks governing those developments. We, as a department, see these types of requests usually through permit review, and we are here in support of the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works? And do you want to recognize the President of the Baltimore City Council, Nick Mosby? Before we move to the last two agency reports, did you, would you like to comment? Okay. Rockin Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessia Smith, Chief of Staff, Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, here on behalf of our Executive Director, Reginald Moore. We were referred Council Bill 23-0444, the Charter Amendment for Inner Harbor Park. As this bill is in line with our mission to advocate for the protection of open space and the preservation of natural resources, we stand behind our positive bill report for that one. The second bill referred to us is Council Bill 23-0448. That is the urban renewal, and we also stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Any questions to Recreation and Parks at this time? Okay, moving on to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Michael Moxton. I'm the Director of Finance. Department of Finance was referred Bill 23-0444, and we stand by our report and having no concern with this bill and this project. There is no direct fiscal impact from this legislation. Indirectly, any development has the opportunity to increase economic activity, which would have a positive effect on our revenues, not limited to property tax, the transfer tax, income taxes from any net new jobs that are added as a result of this project, water and wastewater fees, and any additional parking that's collected. We'll be monitoring this project closely for those revenue opportunities. Any increased activity also has the chance to affect our spending. We'll be monitoring that closely as well, but there is no direct ask of city funding associated with this project, and none that would commit us to any funding as a result of this legislation.
Thank you. I just want to quickly answer this question that was put in the chat. They said, so the public that showed up to testify can't, cannot testify. That is totally not true. There is going to be space for public testimony. Thank you. You do now have the written amendments that has been offered by the Department of Planning and also the written amendments offered by Councilman Costello in front of you. So we're going to go ahead and kind of go over those again before we move on. Councilman Dorsey, you have your hand raised?
Yes, we're going to have questions for Finance?
Oh, sure. Yes. You have a question for Finance? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So there hasn't been any financial requests made of the city so far.
That's correct.
But the Finance Department is aware of the concept plan that has been presented to the public, and that it basically consists of two general buckets of investment. One is the private development revolves around the construction of four buildings, and the rest is in public space, and that the public will be expected to pay for the development in public space, not the private developer.
We're aware of the plan. We're aware that there are conversations going on between the developer and the state, and we'll keep monitoring very closely. But as I said in the initial answer, there is no ask of the city at this time.
Does the Finance Department expect that at any point there will be an ask?
I can only speak to what's been asked thus far, and there's nothing that's been asked.
Has the Finance Department asked if they should expect at any point to be asked for funds?
The Finance Department has been in these conversations and were, as part of our planning process, looking at whether or not there's anything that we need to take action on. And we have not been advised that there's any action that's needed of the city financially at this time.
So the Finance Department has no reasonable expectation that it is going to be asked for any public funds?
I don't believe that. As Finance Director, I could ever say that about literally anything. It is impossible to predict the future, but there is nothing that the Finance Department is aware of right now that would require a commitment of city funds.
I think I made my point.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that there may be, because they are subject to the Inclusionary Housing Law. And the Inclusionary Housing Law requires a 10% of their units, 5% for 60% of AMI, and 5% for 80, excuse me, 50% of AMI. Whereas my conversations have been that there would be hopefully more than that, but we don't know yet, and that there isn't a specific ask for the tax credit, but I would imagine that that would be coming. So just FYI. But that's my understanding, and I'm hopeful that the minimum will be, we know that the minimum is required of the development. I'm very hopeful that we will see more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to these amendments. We'll go ahead and, I want to recognize Councilman Glover, also a member of the committee. Hillary, we're going to, we now have the law departments of amendments. If you just want to do a quick review.
And Madam Chair, the first amendment is law, the second is mine, so I'll defer to Hillary on the first one.
Okay.
Yes, to be clear, again, our bill report addressed a narrow legal issue, making sure that you're not dedicating private property for a public purpose. And to be clear, the current inner harbor, those are private buildings, but they are of the nature that the public's allowed to enter. A residence is not of that same nature. So that was the only legal issue that we spotted in the charter amendment, and our amendment would correct it. However, the developer and the council member, or the developer came to the council member, and he asked us to incorporate a separate policy concept of being sure to restrict both those areas open to the public and those areas not open to the public to 4.5 acres and to an area of the park that doesn't extend south of Conway Street. So that's what Amendment Number One does in what's just been passed out. It essentially includes the language, but making clear that the areas used for multifamily dwellings and off-street parking are not part of the area dedicated as parkland for public benefit. And that's just an important legal concept. And then it goes on to, and again, these are, this amendment changes the first reader version of this bill. It does not change the charter. So as you read the amendment, just keep that in mind, it's referencing what was in the original first reader. And so then it's going through and striking the necessary brackets so that it eventually basically reads that the park provides multifamily dwellings and off-street parking, and adds in a third area, the, this is hard to describe because, again, it's off the first reader version, but it adds the language to the part that has the 4.5 acre restriction and says, except that any areas used for multifamily dwellings and off-street parking are not dedicated as a public park. So, I mean, it's kind of a challenging, complicated wording exercise, but it does nothing more than make clear that two things. One, that the private residences and any associated parking with them aren't a public park. And two, that everything, both the residences and that parking, as well as commercial shops, restaurants, things like what's already there, have a maximum of 4.5 acres and stay above Conway Street. So hopefully that does what you need in terms of describing it, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. And then it was Amendment Number Two on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. Amendment Number Two is my two, is my amendment. When a bill is introduced, there is a bill number, there is a short title to the bill, and then there is a summary of what's in the bill. That summary is non-binding. It's an editorial that summarizes what's in the bill. And then there's the actual bill. What's in the bill itself is the important stuff, right? That's what changes the law. When this was originally drafted, the summary of it explained the boundaries of the Inner Harbor Park, and that created some confusion and some concern that what was being proposed would be some type of construction or development in West Shore Park or Rash Field. And as I mentioned at the onset of the hearing, I wanted to kind of nip that rumor in the bud. So I made a public commitment back in November that I would change the language in the summary, that I would ask for that to be amended by my colleagues, so that there was no more remaining uncertainty. Because we have three bills in front of us, and when the three bills are coupled together, they permit certain things and they restrict certain things. And what's in the summary doesn't impact what's permitted or what's restricted. So I'm merely changing that summary language with this amendment, if this amendment passes, to make it explicitly clear that the combined three bills do not change the conditions at Rash Field. So it reads, "Section 2, and be it further resolved, that enacting this resolution of the mayor and city council, it is the intent of the mayor and city council to preserve the public park known as Rash Field and to preserve the existing development restrictions within the Inner Harbor Park, south of Conway Street." Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to answer any questions on that proposed amendment.
Thank you for that clarification as well, and I think that clarification has been clarified. Moving on to the next set, did you want to go ahead and talk about those?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to defer to Director Ryer or Ms. Audette. These amendments were drafted in conjunction, my office and your office, based on Planning Commission. So Ms. Audette, if you could kindly jump through the four amendments here that's part of the Costello slash Planning Department package. Thank you.
I'd have them.
And just for the record, say who you are again.
Sure. Caitlin Audette with the Department of Planning. Hold on. A little bigger than my phone. Thanks. Okay, so for Amendment Number Four, the initial item placed, hold on. Oh, sorry, there we go. It's double-sided. Amendment Number One is a simple technical change. Amendment Two removes or inserts the correct information for flood planning critical air requirements versus referencing outdated information. Again, another technical minor alteration. Amendment Three is a minor technical change. Amendment Four is a bit more meaty. So in Appendix One of the plan, there is a Exhibit F, which contains specific controls for... So, yeah, the request was to modify Appendix One to include Lot 15 and Lot 25 along the waterfront. And to codify the pedestrian access along the waterfront. Let me make sure since everything... I guess that answers it.
So for amendment number four, since it is kind of lengthy, is it something that you're adding in?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
For amendment number four on the back. It's pretty lengthy, is that, and it deals with pedestrian access, and so it's new. This is a new piece you're adding in. Did you want to just read that?
Amendment number four captures the public access requirements of the promenade and connections between the promenade and adjacent rights of way. So it sort of puts into place the legal system for pedestrian access to the waterfront.
Okay.
And this is codified in the exhibit F. So the language that is in this amendment number four is what is visible in appendix F.
And I do see something about, included in this is something written by the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, is in this as well.
Yes, that is standard language. As often, these originated in their renewal plans, which were ultimately reporting to the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development.
Gotcha.
That's where the authority lies.
Any, any questions from the committee on these one through four? Yes, Councilman Dorsey. Push the red out.
Just gotta manhandle it, I guess. Okay, so I'm reading amendment three. On page four, strike beginning with "that" in line 12 through and including "three" in line 16. So if I do that, what this says is, "Building construction which is approved by the agency shall be permitted provided that vehicle circulation and parking at or above grade are prohibited." Parking above grade prohibited. That to me like reads as if all parking will be below grade. Is, am I reading this? Just in Area 14?
Councilman, I don't know if that was the intent of the bill, but we did have concerns about any below-grade parking because it threatens the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So, but yeah, I can't speak to whether or not that was the intent of that particular amendment or not.
Madam Chair, we have diagrams that show various areas, some of which have fairly blurry text on them. It's unclear to me what is development area 14 to which this provision applies.
14 is McKeldon Plaza. McKeldon Plaza.
Thank you.
Whoops. That we can hear now from the project team that has been waiting patiently. And you want to, yes, please come to the podium. You might want to introduce your team, and you're on.
Hello? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is this clear?
Yes. And your presentation is directed to the committee.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. So good afternoon, Chair Middleton and members of the committee and the council. For the record, my name is David Bramble. I'm the managing partner of MCB Real Estate. And I am very happy to be here today to talk about this Harbor Place project. And many of you know I'm a Baltimore city resident. I grew up in West Baltimore. I still live in Madison Park on Madison Avenue with my wife and my children. And I do know personally what it feels like to be excited about going to Harbor Place. My family celebrated many important milestones there, and as did everyone in Baltimore, welcoming friends and family from other parts of the country. And it's sad because it hasn't been a place where people wanted to go for many years. And that's why my partner Peter Pinkerton and I, another Baltimore native, decided to take on this very challenging but important work. And I've talked about this a million times, but I will say this again because I think it's important. This isn't a project that MCB has to do. This is a project that we want to do. We want to do it because it's super, just incredibly important for the future of our city and our state. Baltimore is a main destination in the, in central Maryland, and it's historically been driven by the Inner Harbor. But it has languished for years and gotten to a point of disrepair that neither native Baltimoreans or current residents or visitors, nobody wants to go there today. And we really have to rise to the challenge to reactivate our premier asset, to be a place where people want to spend time 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And this should be regardless of income, hobby, age, zip code, no matter where you are in Baltimore. It should be a place you want to be and feel comfortable coming to enjoy. So at MCB, that's our goal. We've taken on many complicated projects before, including ones here in Baltimore City. And figuring out the next chapter for Harbor Place for the next generation of Baltimoreans, we see as a challenge that was set out for us. And I know there's been a lot of public conversation about our process, and we very intentionally started out with a different kind of process that I know people aren't used to. And I know that makes certain people feel uncomfortable. But we truthfully started with community engagement, talking to people. And talking to people who don't always get asked questions about what should happen downtown. People who live in my neighborhood. And we held large public forums. We talked to seniors at the Waxler Center. We talked to people in West Baltimore at Coppin State, South Baltimore Middle Branch Rec Center, Maryland Sign Center, and we've heard from young Baltimoreans. We knocked on over 1,000 doors. I am pretty sure I'm the only developer in the city of Baltimore who puts signs on the sides of city buses, asking residents to come and engage and ask questions and give their ideas about, about what should happen downtown. And we heard from people in over 100 neighborhoods in this great city. And that's where we started. Our designers sat in those forums to hear feedback firsthand. And then what you've seen in these initial designs that we've presented, we believe they reflect what we've heard. So I'm excited to be before you today to work through the same design review and entitlement process that all large projects in the city of Baltimore should, should and do undergo. And we thank the Planning Commission for unanimously favorably referring our legislation to this committee for consideration. This legislative package before you will enable us to restore the heart of our city. It will restore Harbor Place to a place where people want to come and spend time and celebrate birthdays and retirements and enjoy the water and feel safe and welcome in our city. The overarching plan that governs the Inner Harbor, the Inner Harbor Renewal Plan, Urban Renewal Plan, was established almost a half a century ago. Just as great waterfront cities around the world are reinventing their waterfronts, now too is Baltimore's time to position itself at the forefront. And at the end of this process, if approved by the committee and the council, Harbor Place will be on the ballot in November for all of Baltimore to cast their vote for or against. Of course, we don't want the against votes, we want the for ones. But it's so important that this project go back to the people. So MCB's done a lot of complicated projects in a lot of places. And we definitely understand that there are people who will love the project and some people who won't. We also understand that this is just the beginning of the process, not the end. So we thank you today for your time and consideration on this important matter. And I hope you feel as excited as we do about the future of this project, the future of downtown, and the future of Baltimore. There are not many folks who are as invested in Baltimore as all of us are here. And you see all the people who are taking time out of their day to come and talk about this. This is important. It's important to me as a resident. It's important to me as an investor. And we can do this together if we just believe in the potential of the harbor, the potential for what it could be. So now I'd like to turn it over to Caroline Hecker, who can discuss the bills and answer any questions in detail that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, committee members. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of MCBHP Baltimore LLC. Thank you, Councilman Costello. Thank you all of the agency representatives who are here. I know a lot of work has gone into reviewing the three bills, and I appreciate all the thoughtful analysis. You know, this legislation really is critical to establishing the flexibility that we need to think creatively about reimagining the Inner Harbor to become a world-class destination once again. I want to spend a few minutes dispelling a few rumors and misconceptions that I've heard circulating about the project. And I want to remind everybody, and Mr. Bramble just said it, that this will go to the voters in November. So this is certainly not the last bite at the apple that anyone has to voice their, their views about the project. As a preliminary matter, this is not a giveaway to any, any developer, specifically MCB. The buildings are private property. The city gave them to the Rouse Company 50 years ago. They've been sold several times since then. The city owns the land underneath them, but the buildings themselves are privately owned, and MCB owns them. We are not looking for any city funding for the project. I know there's, there's been a number of, you know, $400 million in public funds that has been sort of floated about in the world. And, you know, that, there, there is going to be some public investment. We expect it's going to be made at the state level and the federal level. There are promenade improvements that are going to need to be made regardless of this project. They're going to be expensive. We expect, though, that the federal government is going to pay for those improvements. The federal government paid for the construction of the promenade when it was originally built 50 years ago. They paid for major improvements that were made 20 years ago. And the expectation is that there will be federal funds to, to fund the reconstruction, rehabilitation of the promenade. The realignment of the streets, the Calvert Street reconfiguration there, we expect will largely be state funds. We think with the red line coming in, you know, there's going to be a significant amount of state funding that's going to come into the transportation, infrastructure improvements that need to be made. And so, no, at this time, we are not asking for any city funds. Want to give us city funds? We're happy to take them. But, but we, we are not asking for city funds in connection with the project. The plans that have been proposed and which were released at the end of October, and I know that this hearing today is not about the design plans, but, but they are consistent with what has been envisioned for the Inner Harbor since it was first contemplated as something other than a industrial maritime port. The Inner Harbor Project One Urban Renewal Plan was first adopted in 1967. It's been amended several times, but the latest amendments that you have before you today are, are really modest changes to the original plan that was initially contemplated over 50 years ago. Similarly, the, the plans are also consistent with the city's Pratt Street 2.0 plan. The removing of the Calvert Street spur has been part of the Downtown Partnerships plans for at least the last 14 years. This is not radical change from what has been in the works for a long time, but there, it is really a plan that's built on the legacy of all of the planning work that has come ahead of us. To be clear, the proposed development does not include anything south of Conway Street. Councilman Costello has emphasized this repeatedly, and his amendment, which we support, clarifies that there is nothing south of Conway Street that is proposed. The developer only controls the pavilions here. The city is retaining ownership of the promenade and of McKeldon Park. We believe that the best project will include a comprehensive redevelopment of the entire Inner Harbor area, but this is going to require a coordinated effort with the city. And any development that would be proposed for Rash Field or West Shore Park would not only require additional legislation, but it would also require another charter amendment and another referendum of the city voters. Likewise, we're not annexing any portion of Light Street or Pratt Street. We are proposing improvements. You've seen them on the plans, that will narrow the streets to accommodate transit, bike lanes, pedestrian traffic. But the developer is not acquiring this property. And then, in fact, you know, we have a few exhibits that are up on the slides. The project is actually going to increase the amount of public space from what exists today by almost five acres. The current public space is 13.9 acres. The new space that will be available to the public is 18.7 acres. It's a difference of 4.0 acres of increased publicly available space. That consists of about an additional acre of the Calvert Street spur. McKeldon Plaza is about 1.3 acres. That's 2.3 acres of new contiguous open space, plus there will be new additional promenade space and elevated park space along the building we refer to as the sale building. The footprints of the buildings that are proposed are smaller than the footprints of the existing pavilions, and that's the exhibit that you see up on the screens here. The current pavilions have a footprint of a little over 117,000 gross square feet. The proposed new buildings, which go, it's, it's now, instead of two big buildings, it's five smaller buildings, is about 115,000 square feet. So we're looking at about 2,000 square feet less of footprint, which means 2,000 square feet more of ground plane, open, publicly available space. The building heights, likewise, are lower than other nearby buildings. And there's another exhibit that maybe we can flip to that, that shows this, the proposed residential buildings relative, here's, here's the exhibit that shows the additional view corridors to the waterfront. And then I think the third slide is the building heights, which you'll see are, are lower than other buildings that are in the immediate vicinity. Our charter amendment confirms that commercial uses include multifamily residential and off-street parking. The, the Urban Renewal Plan amendment, I would note, already requires UDAP review and requires that all off-street parking be screened from view because it will be, either be below grade or above grade but fully wrapped. You know, as Ms. Audette mentioned, there are significant design standards within the zoning code already that will prevent us from having parking that's visible from, from the, you know, public streets. And there is, as the Parking Authority mentioned, a ton of available parking in surrounding garages downtown. And so we really are going to try to provide only the amount of parking that's necessary for the project because we understand there is already a surplus of parking around downtown. Finally, that, you know, again, if, if this committee and the city council approves the legislation, the charter amendment will go to the voters in the fall. And so there will be a referendum where the citizens of Baltimore ultimately will have the final say in the redevelopment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know there's a lot of people here who want to testify, but we thank you for your time today.
Thank you. I think I'll allow, if you have right now, like maybe one question per committee, because we do have public testimony, unless it's a question, real extra burning question, but we do have a lot of people also waiting to give us information as well. But we'll, we'll start with Councilmember Stokes.
I actually don't have a question. I just think Mr. Bramble left out, he did come over in East Baltimore and presented his development plan. Also, I just want to make sure that's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, they did some extensive work and had many meetings. Any other questions on this end? To my right, Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it was said that there's not going to be any funding from the city of Baltimore, but you also stated that this would appear on the ballot in November. Are there any questions from the ballot that's going to appear in November asking the city of Baltimore to provide any funds during that time?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions at this time to my left? Yes, Councilmember Ramos.
I'm trying to figure out which one. I wondered, since this is a, a major land use change, both in the charter amendment, the zoning bill, and the U R P, it hasn't come to me, but I kind of wondered whether or not there were discussions in any of the forums relative to any benefits agreement or any other sort of conditions on which the developer has been asked for our permission to do this, you know, with these. So for instance, the inclusionary question is resolved, well, it's not resolved, but it's getting there. The, for instance, we've also, you know, had, you know, is there going to be The, for instance, we've also, you know, had, you know, is there going to be commitment for making sure that we're using, you know, contractors that are following all of the contracting laws? Are we going to be using, you know, that kind of thing? I mean, we have, I have a couple of developments in my district that we've had some wage theft issues. And so, you know, I'm just using that as example. It could be anything, but I haven't heard anything about whether or not there's been discussion about some agreements that the development team may have made as a condition for being able to have this, this permission to do this through these bills.
The truth is, it's a little bit premature for that. These bills are very broad zoning authorizations. They're not even really what you would call a major land use authorization that's specific to this property. They're really broader bills that establish a framework for the development, but the appropriate time for those types of agreements will be once we have a real plan and we start with the actual development of the project on a parcel-by-parcel basis. The ground lease ultimately will go to the Board of Estimates for approval, and so, you know, there is an opportunity for, you know, any type of agreements related to the development of the parcels as part of that, but it's, we're really too early for that at this stage.
Well, and I don't think we've done that in any other project within this committee as well.
That is true. I'm just conscious of the fact that since there isn't an ask, a public money ask, there, this is, this is it. Like, this is the opportunity to have those conversations. As a matter of fact, you and I are going to a meeting after this about something where some of those discussions may occur on that particular development. So, I'm just curious, I think we need to have those discussions because this is the only time. There is no public money that you need from us at this point. So I just wonder, why hasn't this conversation even happened yet?
Well, the truth is, it really wouldn't be appropriate to tie it to the zoning bills that we're doing today. It's not something that would be part of this action of the city council. And again, right now, we have plans that are conceptual in nature, but I think it's even too early to know what you or the constituent groups might want.
I would imagine that in all the forums, they had articulated what they wanted. But, I mean, it's, it's just something that I think we need to consider because there isn't, there isn't any other time where this leverage could occur. There's just not. And so, that's why I was just wondering where, why we haven't had those discussions.
I don't, I don't think this is really the right time for those discussions to take place.
We don't get involved in individual contract negotiations as well.
Right. It's really not something that's in front of this committee at this time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I had a technical question real quick on the zoning bill, and I don't know if Ms. Hecker is the one to answer it, but generally, well, I shouldn't say generally. The only role that the council has on zoning bills is to determine whether or not the change that is asked in a zoning, whether it's a rezoning or a height, I believe, and the Law Department can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's like a change in the, if there's an error or a change in the, you know, makeup of the neighborhood. And that, I don't see that in the bill report.
This isn't a property-specific bill. This is a change to the text of the zoning code. So in this particular bill, it's, it's just changing the permissions in all of this particular district. And I believe it's C1, C5IH something. So this would apply anywhere that district is. It's not specific to a particular parcel, and it's not a rezoning, so it doesn't have the, the standards.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dorsey, you had a question?
Thank you. The units, the housing that's planned here conceptually, it has been described as very high-end housing. Not that I don't think that everybody deserves an opportunity to live in very high-end housing and wonderful housing, and that I think it's great that our inclusionary housing law makes that opportunity for people. But I am aware of the fact that the higher the cost of the housing, the farther that is away from 50% AMI and 60% AMI. Does the development team have any calculation of what it will mean for 10% of the units to be set aside in terms of the public subsidy making up that rent gap between those inclusionary housing units and the tax, the rent yield?
Not yet. It's too early. We have not gotten that far.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're finally now going to listen to public testimony. The committee will now take public testimony. Please make sure, and I think we've checked, we have all the sign-in sheets, and I'll ask if you have not signed in on the sign-in sheet to text, to testify. The sheets were in the lobby area. Because of the number of people who have signed up for testimony, we will only be accepting the testimony in person today. If you are joining us online, you may submit written testimony to the committee via the city council's website. For those testifying today, individuals will take two minutes. If you are here representing an organization, please take three minutes for your testimony, and we do have a timer. And I'm going to go ahead and start with those that have signed up to testify in person. And what I'm going to do is maybe call the first three people, so if anyone is in the galley, that'd give them time to come down. So I'll start that way. And we have had some previous people that I'm accommodating for childcare, and all those have also been in consideration. So we'll start with, when I call your name, the first three people, and you can kind of line up. Josh Laws, Nick Mayer, and Meg Murphy. If you are, if I called your name, you want to come down to testify, if you're here. And two of them are coming down from the galley. And the other two that also a childcare duty, I'll call your names as well. Mark Anthony Thomas and Terrell Brooks. And as I go through this list, please pardon me if I mispronounce your name. So remember, come up, say who you are, who you're representing, and we have a timer here to start your two minutes.
Great. So, good afternoon. I'm Mark Anthony Thomas. I lead the Greater Baltimore Committee. And on behalf of the JBC, I'm here to offer my support for today's bills. For more than 40 years, the American Waterfronts have been under a vital revitalization that reflects first their rigid industrial past and now revamping them to be moderns of redevelopment. But one of the early adopters of this was Harbor Place, not just for the region's core, but for how cities across the globe re-envision how workers, tourists, and residents connect it with the water's edge. This was once a town square unlike others, but times have changed. This is particularly clear in industrial cities that have transformed not just their economies, but how people interact with their neighborhoods and the waterfronts that sit adjacent to them. In New York City, the 32-mile loop around New York's Manhattan Island has been largely revitalized. Philadelphia's 11-mile Greenway, Atlanta created a 22-mile Beltway that speaks to all the level of ambition and the broader re-envisioning that this project aims to achieve. The redevelopment of the Harbor Place is a crown jewel for an emerald necklace that encompasses more than seven miles of waterfront neighborhoods managed by the Waterfront Partnership and the 11 miles envisioned by the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership as a future frontier.
25 seconds.
Okay. We're here to offer our support because we believe this project is that capstone opportunity. It is that crown jewel, and we're excited to be a partner, to work closely with the council and the mayor's office and the many downtown stakeholders as we move this forward. Thank you.
I'll say these other names again that I've called before. John Laws, Nick Mayer, Meg Murphy. Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Meg Murray. I'm a city resident and a public school parent, and I'm here to express my support for the Harbor Place project as presented by MCB. I have the pleasure of living in, working in, and enjoying our city. I am in inner, I am in Inner Harbor nearly every day. When I am not walking to work, I'm with my daughter in Rashfield Park, at the Science Center, or at the aquarium. Harbor Place as it stands today is a really sad pass-through. It's a place to walk by and get to where you're actually going. It's hot and deserted in the summer and cold and lifeless in the winter, even when record crowds enjoy amenities like the Christmas Village and the Wine Festival nearby. No one comes and stays in Harbor Place as-is. I've lived here for nearly a decade, and that's how it's been since I've been here. The space might technically be classified as a public park with two privately-owned buildings today, but if the community isn't using the space as-is, what benefit does it offer us? We have a chance to reimagine the space, make it vibrant, green, active, and accessible. MCB's plan does this. It puts residents in place to care for the space daily. It provides accessible ground-floor amenities to the broader community, retail, restaurants, and parks. The project accounts for climate change and will allow our community to enjoy Inner Harbor for generations. The proposed design also connects the city's amenities, sports, concerts, and all the events that make Baltimore Baltimore with improved walkways and transportation and infrastructure. I'm excited about the potential and eager to see the project happen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I urge the committee to support these three bills.
Thank you. Josh Laws, Nick Mayer. You're Nick?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. My name is Nick Mayer, and I live in Federal Hill. And I encourage you to support all three bills for the Harbor Place project. I've lived in Baltimore since 2010, and I took time off work to come make these comments because the future of Harbor Place and the Inner Harbor is very personal. The harbor is an inner part of my, a part of my daily life, whether I'm trying to catch the 71 bus to get to daycare and work with my daughter, taking my family to the Science Center or the aquarium, or walking home along the promenade to Just the Right Song. In the last 14 years, I've watched the pavilions fall into decay, and I've worried as the ferry landings have flooded more and more often, even in sunny weather. And I've been disappointed as planning projects like the Inner Harbor 2.0 plan have failed to result in concrete change. I strongly support the proposed Harbor Place plan, especially the residential towers and the anticipated street-scaping changes that will follow to Pratt and Light Streets. We need to grow our city, and I can't imagine any way for our city to support local shops and restaurants in the harbor if there aren't residents living there for whom it's easier to go downstairs than to order off of Amazon or Grubhub. I firmly believe that if you want to tackle the big problems of our time, Baltimore's a place where you can do so, and I'm excited that in the proposed Harbor Place project, there's a concrete project that will take these challenges seriously, like climate change and the housing shortage.
Speak up a little louder.
Sorry.
And you're down to 30 seconds.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and I encourage you to support this project in all three bills.
Thank you. And then the next, Josh Laws and Terrell Brooks. Okay. Okay. Is Josh, one more time for Josh Laws. Okay, the next three. Isn't that Chef? Okay. Okay, Chef Amanda Mack, Chef Timothy Dean, and Michael Saunders. Good afternoon. Good evening.
I don't know. I've been here so long, I don't even know what time of day it is. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Michael Saunders, and I am one of the founding partners of Matriarch Coffee. We are a minority-owned small business located here in Baltimore. We import, roast, and distribute coffee. We founded our business during COVID. We have never had storefront and have relied on personal deliveries to grow our business and to reach our clients. When MCB acquired Harbor Place, I reached out to them to see if there was an opportunity for our business to get it, get into our first storefront. Not only did they respond immediately, they've provided us prime waterfront space in the Pratt Street Pavilion at a deeply discounted rate, excuse me, my vision is a little off, that made us, made this affordable for our small business. Mr. Bramble and the team at MCB are committed to local business growth, and I know they are committed to the inclusion of local, small, minority, and women-owned businesses in the new Harbor Place in addition to their current local tendencies. I have heard some say that MCP is pricing people out in an attempt to drive down their property value. My fellow tenants and I can definitely say we stand here as proof that that is not a fact. Not only did they work closely with us in helping get the agreement done for the space, they helped us design our store, worked through our permit process, and paid for certain improvements to make our tendency possible. I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore City. I am a true son of Baltimore and a small business owner. I couldn't be more excited for revitalized Harbor Place and the opportunity that presents, that it presents for my business. We have been waiting a very, very long time for the Harbor Place to be restored, and MCB's vision for the future will put us on an upward trajectory. For us, the future cannot come fast enough, so I encourage you all to support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Chef Amanda Mack and Chef Timothy Dean, moving on. Remember, when I call your name and threes come up, then we can keep it moving. Matt Campbell, Bob Manikin, Doug Schmidt.
Timothy Dean, would you call him now?
Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Clerk, and distinguished members of the council and the committee. My name is Chef Timothy Dean. I have operated restaurants in Baltimore, Washington DC, California, France, and Atlanta, and was a competitor on Top Chef while in Baltimore. I've been working in DC for an extended period of time, but have wanted to return home to Baltimore for a long time, but it was never quite the right feeling for the concepts that we had. After seeing the Harbor Place plan presented by MCB, I knew this was time, and MCB Harbor Place would be the place for our concept. I can see the space in my mind, amazing views of the harbor.
Speak up, and you can pull that up some, too. Thank you.
Amazing views of the harbor. Excuse me, my glasses here. And the water and public space from our dining room and outdoor patio space as well. This plan presents an opportunity for Baltimore to revitalize its downtown and create growth for a chef like myself. While I may be one of the first, if the council, while I may be one of the first, if the council moves this legislation forward, I'm certain I will not be the last major culinary talent to seek to come to Baltimore, storied waterfront, and re-imagine Harbor Place, because I will call my friends in France, Italy, California, and from Top Chef to tell them about this grace, the great project that we have going on here. I could not be more excited about the potential we have as a city and as a citizen, and I ask this distinguished body to help me take this giant step forward to obtaining a Michelin star for Baltimore City. And I look forward to our future in coming back to Baltimore. And I look forward to our future and coming back to Baltimore, and I thank you for hearing me today and for having me.
Thank you. I remember that first steakhouse that you.
Well, that was the third concept. Timothy Dean Bisho first. Timothy Dean Bisho was here in 2002 to 2015. Then we did the Steakhouse.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I like your shot clock up there. It's terrific. Thank you. My name is Doug Schmidt. I'm a principal at Workshop Development, a local developer, and a lifelong resident of Baltimore. I'm here to express my support for the legislation before this committee that enables one of the most important revitalization projects in our city to proceed. It's urgent that this work start to show that, through the world, that Baltimore is a city where government encourages people to create, invest, and get things done. Focused on our harbor, we have any city's dream team. MCB is a local company with a strong track record and civically-minded approach to development. They've hired world-class designers and spent months soliciting input and developing an innovative plan. This is how development planning is supposed to work. The new Harbor Place needs to be attractive to residents and visitors, create jobs and taxes, and be financially successful. If investors do well, they invest more, and the other investors learn how well they did, and they invest, too. Ask residents of a growing city about opportunities to improve their lives and the lives of their families versus those in a shrinking city. Prosperity results from progress. The only way a city in decline can reverse disinvestment is with investment. No one in this room has the expertise nor has spent the time to determine what plan works or does not work, except the MCB team. When I look at any piece of land, I see endless possibilities, but I also quickly focus on what is feasible. MCB is telling us what is feasible, and I believe them. Aspirational renderings make architects happy, but a city moves forward only when what can be done is done. The critics have been heard, and for those who provide constructive input, cheers. But obstructionists who think they should micromanage the details of a project, they're really hurting Baltimore's chance to start fulfilling its potential. Much more civic action is needed to turn Baltimore around. Neighborhood cleanups, mentoring youth, and other volunteering activities need good citizens' time and effort. Fighting against progress is not on the list. And for those developers who think they have a better idea for the future of our waterfront, you had your chance and you passed. It was no secret that Harbor Place was a bankruptcy. MCB stepped up, and now we need to support them. I remember as a teenager the activity and energy in the inner harbor in the 80s. The new vision of Harbor Place is our best chance to bring that excitement back to the water and for all Baltimoreans.
Wrap it up.
It's easy to be a critic, but very hard to do. Let them do.
Thank you. Bob Manikin. Moving on, the next three. Andre Hinton, Jeff Ratnau, Jeffrey Ratnau, and Lindsay Thompson. Any of those three, come on up. Lindsay, you're Lindsay?
Yes, I'm Lindsay.
You go right ahead.
And I'm testifying in support, and my brief comments address some of the major arguments against the MCB development. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
These arguments, in my view, against, the against arguments, reflect a deeply constrained vision of Baltimore, its historical significance in the national and global economy, and its future as a world-class city. The first objection, don't clutter the Baltimore Harbor with high rises when we need to preserve the waterfront for public access and recreation. The Baltimore Harbor watershed is a 15-mile tidal estuary of the Lower Patapsco River. Harbor Place is a tiny fraction of this huge watershed with 36 miles of waterfront within the city. This is a comfortable walk from the inner harbor near some of the city's most under-resourced neighborhoods. The Middle Branch Resiliency Initiative, for instance, a project of the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership and Parks and People, is adding more than 50 acres of publicly accessible new wetlands, boosting the city's waterfront ability to mitigate increasingly frequent flooding and creating transformative new habitat for wildlife and harbor areas to enjoy. That's just one example of the huge resources we have that are publicly accessible. Second objection, don't build for rich people when we need affordable housing. Baltimore City desperately needs high-end residential housing to bolster its tax base and help finance the affordable housing initiatives in other parts of the city. The Baltimore Harbor is one of the most attractive, desirable waterfront locations in the entire East Coast luxury housing market. We should try to attract these people. Third objection, don't saturate the inner harbor with residential units when people don't want to live in downtown in a business district that isn't a real neighborhood. Harbor Place is the center of a mile-wide radius that includes some of Baltimore's oldest and most vibrant neighborhoods. Harbor Place is right in the middle of Baltimore's best places to live, work, play, and pray. Third objection.
Wrap it up.
What?
You're over time.
Where am I? Okay.
Over your two minutes.
I'll be done then, because I sent this in writing.
We definitely got your message.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, come in threes, so we can, we're going to keep it moving. Emily Hudson, Chris Umfume, Michael Middleton. Any of those three?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Michael Middleton. I am presently the Executive Director of the SB7 Coalition, and have served for 15 years as the Executive Director for the Cherry Hill Development Corporation. I stand basically to support the plan before this body. I support the MCB's team's vision for a revitalized inner harbor, and I'm here this afternoon to express their support and to ask this committee to move this legislation forward. Harbor Place served its purpose. It catalyzed growth downtown, but it has fallen into disrepair. By voting to approve this legislative package, we will take a step forward and toward the future, where every young person in Baltimore, from SB7 to Mount Washington and everywhere in between, can enjoy a world-class waterfront designed for them in generations to come. This legislation will modify the existing land use controls as has been done in the past and to enable this catalytic project to move forward. The time has come, and I think the time is now. MCB is the right team for the moment. The decision is yours, and I ask you to vote yes on these bills to show the world and the young man from Cherry Hill that Baltimore is the great city we want it to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emma Stokes. Isaac Leo. Rose Hamm.
Hello. My name is Emma Stokes. I've lived within a five-minute walk of Harbor Place for about 40 years, and it's partly the reason I moved here. It means that Harbor Place has been part of my home, both in its glory days and its horrid decline. I'm here to state as briefly as I can my journey from preferences to pragmatism, and I think it's pretty emblematic of a lot of what you're going to hear today. Harbor Place was a great, wondrous place. It was a treat. Watching its deterioration over the past 10 years, I constantly looked for somebody or somebody who would, someone who would turn the tide, yet no sound strategy seemed to be emerging from government or from business, public or private. Then the bankruptcy seemed to be the death knell. As evocatively written by Melody Simmons, quote, "The collapse of the waterfront center has been highly visible, painfully slow, and humbling all at once, occurring as Baltimore's civic pride is battered by corruption, high murder rates, and a tarnished national image." Then we recently heard about our drop 40 spots in a U.S. metro ranking on economic performance. So then in 2022, I hear somebody's interested, and I get all excited and optimistic again. You've heard about Mr. Bramble, who is a passionate devotee. I'm ready to take him at his word and trust him. You know, humans are an interesting species. We all have our preferences, and for several months, because initially I had a really bad visceral response, it was very hard for me to accept things. But I spent the last six months reading, thinking, and trying to move to a more pragmatic, informed place. So at this point, I really hope we all can reconcile these competing values and preferences and stop what seems to be a really unproductive us-versus-them situation. There are lots of things you've heard and that I agree with that merit our approval and our support. Trade-offs are necessary. Compromise is not a dirty word. So I really think, here we are 50 years later in the last 10 hard years, so let's, right now, find the political will, financial means, planning capacity, and reasonable civic commitment, and engage Baltimore into a meaningful and lasting transformation of this shared central space.
Thank you.
I don't want to get depressed again. Thanks so much. I vote, I hope you vote yes.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Clear? Awesome. My name is Isaac Leo, and I am here to support the bills. Obviously, my opinion on the Harbor Place redevelopment is well-known, well-publicized. I stand by every word of it, but the language is not necessarily becoming towards the opponents. But I would like to talk more narrowly about the proposed bills and talk in support of allowing for greater intensity of use, greater land development in areas of high land value, in close proximity to a proposed red line. The alignment will go within blocks of that no matter what, or right along Pratt Street, if possible, within walking distance, although the walkability is contested, of Camden Station and access to DC via Mark, access to the fastest-growing neighborhood in the city, downtown, and also a very high level of job density within the walk shed and the bike shed. I think that it is eminently reasonable to view this greater use of land intensity and allowing of possible residential usage in such a place for economic and financial reasons. I think it will, any sort of development that occurs there will improve overall city finances and will improve downtown.
30 sec.
Thank you. And I think that I would request that the committee pass favorably this, these trio of bills to sort of maximize and unlock the land value and sort of capture the possible tax revenue for, to combat any structural budget deficits and to, you know, better services for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Hamm, Wanda Best, and Al Passarella. John Laria. Donald Scroggins. Claus.
Am I jumping ahead of all those other folks?
Yes. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I'm John Laria. I'm the former managing partner of Ballard Spar in Baltimore and now Special Counsel. I don't represent MCB in any of the land use or entitlement matters before this body. Obviously, Caroline Hecker does, but she and MCB asked me to appear today for a very specific reason, and I'll just focus on that. Although I was not personally involved, our firm represented MCB in the acquisition of Harbor Place through the receivership process. The state has a Maryland Commercial Receivership Act, and so receivership is a state law process by which a third party was appointed to facilitate a sale on behalf of Harbor Place's lender and bondholders who own the property's debt. So in view of all that work, I wanted to dispel a few misconceptions and misinformation. Receivership, and by extension, the acquisition of Harbor Place by MCB, is a very public and transparent process. The petition of the receiver in Baltimore Circuit Court says, and I quote, "On April 1st, 2022, MCB submitted its offer to purchase the property. The purchase agreement is the culmination of receiver's ongoing efforts over approximately three years to achieve a sale of the property. The purchase agreement was negotiated at arm's length over a period of two years." In a circuit court order, Judge Nugent found that receive, quote, "receiver in the reasonable exercise of its business judgment and after extensive arm's-length negotiation over many months has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with MCB." Judge Nugent also found that, quote, "The purchase agreement and purchase price were negotiated in good faith, without collusion, and at arm's length, are fair and reasonable, and represent the highest and best offer for the property." And finally, the court said, "The receiver has provided timely, adequate, and sufficient notice of the sale motion, and no other further notices required." Of course, this is really just the judicial determination, and what everybody knows is that Harbor Place was in receivership, and anyone could have approached the receiver to negotiate a purchase. I'd also note there was an objection period after the filing of the receiver's motion and an appeal period after the judge issued his order, and no objections or appeals were filed, and of course, MCB acquired the property. This was not a process over which the city had any control, because the receiver's job is to facilitate a sale on behalf of its client, the lender and the bondholders. The receiver's not local. It doesn't have any civic responsibilities. All this took place in the public realm. All relevant documents are available for anyone to see, and it's wrong or worse for anyone to suggest that a sale run under the Maryland Commercial Receivership Act and ratified by a circuit court judge was a backroom deal or any of the other irresponsible things that have been thrown around. So I just thought I would share that factual information with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good afternoon, and my name is Don Scoggins. I'm in favor of redeveloping Harbor Place, but not in the manner in which it's been proposed. Number one, there are too many what-ifs that are in the proposal, and I'm not in favor of an unlimited restriction on the height limitations. I think that needs to be revisited, or at least needs to be spelled out better. And also, I want to know if there's been a market analysis in terms of how many units that would be, that could be marketable down there. I don't, I kind of question what I hear from like now, about 900 units, upscale units. So I think that we need to revisit that, and also, it's too nebulous about whether federal funds are going to be available. I've heard the young lady mention about anticipated federal funds. So if that doesn't happen, then what? You know, I just don't want to see another property down there that doesn't work out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Klaus Phillips, and I'm an architect in Baltimore. As a point of reference, I worked on the first POD for Harbor Point, and I worked on the Red Line. I think we all want to have Harbor Place revitalized. Everybody would probably agree they languished way too long, and we probably would also agree that we applaud the courage of somebody stepping up and having the courage to buy the pavilions and the mayor to work with the private developer to make something happen. I know also that a lot of you in the committee like the design and the drawings that you have seen, but I would submit today that as the committee vetting this, you have to actually go beyond the liking or not liking. The three bills before you demonstrate that the original fathers and mothers of Harbor Place put three locks in place to ensure that nobody can go rogue with Baltimore's comments. Zoning, Urban Renewal, and the Charter, and the Charter is really special, as has been explained by law. So before you give those three keys away for these locks, you need to be very sure that you will not regret this once the dust settles. And how can you be sure? I heard from the city agencies today that they're all in favor of this. However, I have, the public has not seen the real vetting that's going on, a real cost-benefit analysis from BDC.
30 sec.
Now, assurances about funding the 2.4 million, 2 to 4 million square feet of development in there, there are just arbitrary number. There is no analysis from planning and how it works with the comp plan. The U-DAP process has just begun, and there is no assessment about whether the flood resilience strategy is effective, nor is there a traffic analysis done.
Wrap up.
So there are many crucial facts that we don't know, and that's why I would recommend to you today that you are not advancing this out of committee before you get these facts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three. Brooke McDonald, Liz Bennett, Stephen Topping, and then Ted Rouse. The next three, Brooke McDonald, Liz Bennett, Stephen Topping, and then Ted Rouse. Any of, any order, if you can get in line and just say who you are.
Good afternoon. I'm Liz Bement. I'm reading the testimony of economist Anabon Basu, who is also the CEO of Sage Policy Group. My opposition to the current iteration of proposed Harbor Place redevelopment is rooted in a very simple notion: Baltimore deserves better. While it has been claimed that the city managed a public engagement process, that process must have been a mere exercise in going through the motions. I'm quite sure that Baltimoreans did not ask to be excluded from a substantial share of its most visible public park. Instead of being greeted with open space, they will be told they are not allowed in gigantic apartment buildings guarded by security and intended only for the affluent. I'm quite sure that they did not ask for existing views of the waterfront to be destroyed, resulting not in a net gain in value, but in extraction of existing value by an already wealthy developer. I'm quite sure that they do not want hundreds of millions of dollars to be gifted to the project by Baltimore City when there are so many challenges to be tackled, whether affordable housing, juvenile safety, education, or infrastructure. Speaking of which, no one seems to be paying much attention to the impact of 900 apartments on wastewater treatment capacity. No one seems to be talking about the impact of so much construction material being brought to the water's edge on water quality. Few seem focused on the impact on traffic attributable to proposed lane closures that have yet to be subject
Thirty seconds.
to a timely traffic study. Some will say that something is better than nothing, that that is Baltimore at its worst when it settles. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you the part of the coalition?
Inner Harbor Coalition.
So, okay, so you, so you have, you have the three.
Right.
Sure.
We wanted some visuals because we've been doing a lot of talking. We haven't been looking at what's really happening. You can hold this. Can I hold, oh, sorry. We've been doing a lot of talking, but we haven't been looking at the visuals.
State your name, state, state your name and who you represent.
David Ben, architect in Baltimore for 40 years, member of the Harbor Waterfront Partnership. And I wanted to show what we're actually getting here instead of just words about it. This is looking from just north of the Science Center. You can see the low development. You can barely see the pavilions here. This is showing a background of buildings that look over the shoulders and get views of the water. What's being proposed here is this, and you can see what is blocking out. So, this is what's really going to happen. And what we're not learning from this project was that we, we gave up controls on Harbor Place because it was private property. We did not think about the maintenance or management, which is the real problem there. So, we have now these buildings proposed and clogging up the inner harbor. And that's, the proposal is only a proposal. It's basically been paid $1 million by the city to do eye wash and public participation, but here's what we've got. That's what you can see, and that's only a proposal until the economy changes, the market changes, the backers changes, the federal government. We get a president who doesn't like Baltimore, doesn't want to put any money in it, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is a proposal, but it's just there for the time being. It'd be a miracle if it actually happened. This is what you're voting on today. This allows all of this development, unlimited height, unlimited use, unlimited residential density, size. This is what could happen. So, are you voting today to be making something like Chesapeake, Dallas on the Chesapeake? Are we going to lose our openness? Are we going to lose what's unique about Baltimore? Are we going to lose this park space for this, which is basically allowing the developer a completely open hand? Anything goes. That, and these, these heights aren't even real. It's unlimited. There is nothing restraining this property at this point. I'm hoping we can change this and go to an independent process where we look again at what this can be when we revitalize it, and we look at ways to be celebrating after spending a billion dollars
Thirty seconds.
and seven years, or eight years or so, through construction and traffic problems and all that stuff, and are we going to get this? This is what, I mean, this is real, folks. This is just a diagram, just a massing diagram, but you guys are going to be responsible for this. Are we going to celebrate or not?
Thank you, and I think we did say no diagrams, which you, no signs, which you did give us the thing. And your name was Dave Ben?
David Ben.
Okay.
Forty years of architecture and urban design in Baltimore.
Are you part of the coalition?
Yes.
I didn't call your name.
Inner Harbor Coalition. And I think I'm, I'm out of order. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Matt Campbell?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm Stephen Topping.
Matt, you can. And then you're Stephen, you can go after Steve, you can go after Matt.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Vice President, members of the committee, council president, and other council folk in the chambers this afternoon. My name is Matt Campbell. I'm the executive director of the Baltimore Convention Center, and I wish to offer my support for the package of bills this evening and the overall development timeline for Harbor Place. My primary focus is to emphasize the critical need for a revitalized inner harbor to attract convention business to Baltimore. Since my return to the Convention Center as executive director in January of 2023, there's been an unparalleled amount of momentum, passion, and collaboration amongst business and civic leaders around what will be the next Baltimore Renaissance. The $6.5 billion in growing of capital investment in downtown requires everyone to work in sync to ensure a cohesive downtown product for citizens and guests. One of, if not the most important pieces of that puzzle, is the work being done surrounding Harbor Place. I am acutely aware of the challenges Baltimore faces in maintaining its status as a premier destination, especially for national and regional conventions. The current state of the inner harbor directly impacts Baltimore's ability to attract and retain convention business, and the center is already witnessing the unfortunate loss of significant events and at times, an insurmountable climb to bring new events when competing on a national stage. The continued degradation of Baltimore's downtown product and its resulting lack of vibrancy at its street level is threatening the city's reputation and the Baltimore Convention Center's
Thirty seconds.
ability to fulfill its mission of generating positive economic impact, creating jobs and serving the community. The Harbor, Harbor Place redevelopment is a pivotal step forward in revitalizing not just the inner harbor, but all of downtown and ensuring Baltimore's appeal to convention organizers. The proposed project is not merely about infrastructure. It signifies a commitment to creating a vibrant and welcoming atmosphere, which is a key demand for convention clients. The center has already seen eyes of those patrons and those clients perk up, more phone calls returned, and emails responded since the introduction of this
Wrap up.
plan. So, in my opinion, the city cannot afford to delay the revitalization of the inner harbor, and that we act, ask that the council vote favorably without delay to ensure the citizens of Baltimore have the opportunity to vote in November on the referendum surrounding this project.
Thank you. And anyone else I previously called, get in line. You're Stephen?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Stephen Topping. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Baltimore City. Proposing to privatize our public space is objectable and wrong. The urban renewal plan for the inner harbor has been guiding principles since 1967. Gifting to any commercial developer a variance to build residential apartment skyscrapers clearly enriches the developer at the expense of city residents. The proposed project does not create welcoming, a welcoming place for visitors, does not make the inner harbor more accessible or inclusive, and does not enhance the crown jewel of Baltimore tourism. This forever dedicated public space would be fundamentally altered if any of these amendments are approved. The MCB proposal is ill-conceived. Baltimore's already suffered the consequences of this type of development. You just have to stand atop Federal Hill to see how developers stole the views and limited access to the waterfront. That's Harbor View and the Ritz Carlton. MCB's proposal includes $400 million of imagined state and federal funding. There are no conditions, no backstops should the funding not materialize. This would mean no promenade improvement, no streetscape reconstruction, and no creation of public spaces shown in MCB's pretty pictures. What the inner harbor would be left with is four enormous skyscrapers. We should all expect that other developers will also seek and take full advantage of variances in the future. Do not let our last and most important public space be permanently disfigured by a plan that ensures corporate profits over public interests. Baltimore residents deserve and demand a transparent, competitive process to select the best-designed future for our public space. Mr. Bramble's own words were a warning of what height variance would look like. He said, and I quote, "They're going to be really big buildings." I ask you to vote no on the amendment bills and their proposed variances of existing height, mass, and use restrictions that are protected and made available to all the beautiful waterfront of our prized inner harbor. This space should and must remain public.
Hello, my name is Brooke McDonald, and I am reading a letter from Marty Azola, whose family has been successfully developing and restoring historic buildings in Baltimore for over 50 years. Mr. Azola says, "Most cities would kill to have downtown public waterfront park like Harbor Place. I recall the tens of thousands who turned out with enthusiastic support at the original dedication in 1980. That sentiment is still alive today." Here are a few pertinent facts to support the restoration of Harbor Place rather than its demolition and privatization. One, Baltimore City's population continues to decrease, and along with it, demand for housing. There's plenty available. Two, commercial real estate is in trouble. Devaluation, vacancies, potential, potential loan defaults. It's a bad time for speculative development. Three, several nearby vacant sites downtown may be available and zoned for new apartment construction. Remember the Southern Hotel, the Morris Mechanic Theater, and others. Four, Harbor Place may be eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places in just six short years. Let's not miss that opportunity. And here is the most important one. What we allow to be developed will still be standing long after the developer is gone. Drive up York Road north of Towson sometime. You all of, you owe
Twenty seconds.
all of Baltimore's citizens an extremely careful and well-reasoned decision. Harbor Place is no place to err. Please deny the petition to allow private development of Harbor Place. Restore and enhance what's already there. Most respectfully, Marty Azola.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about Harbor Place. I really want to focus on three additional amendments I would like to see you add regarding parking, financing, and
Say your name, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Ted Rouse. I live in Fells Point. I was a former partner at Streber Brothers Eccles and Rouse. And in, I presented at least 20 projects to the city of Baltimore for changes in zoning, in variances of many kinds. Never did I have the opportunity to just present my plans for the first time to the community onstage with the governor and the mayor. And for that reason, I find the public engagement process lacking inasmuch as always. We had to present our plans to the community. The community gave us input. We came back a second time with revised plans. That has not happened here. And that is why the first amendment I would like to see included is that UDAP be mandatory. Their approval should be mandatory. The Planning Commission, it was announced by Sean Davis, that they had 15 emails, 14 in opposition, but most of them were about design. Never did I not present the design to the Planning Commission. So, this is being pushed through without proper architectural urban planning review, and UDAP is the opportunity
Thirty seconds.
to do it. The, the second has to do with demolition. Please do not let the demolition happen without secured commitments of financing for both the public part of this and the private part of this. And third, let's see, UDAP, parking. Please require the parking to be underground. Screened, architectural screening of parking above ground is ugly and will not be something we want to live with. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dwayne Alexander. I represent LWD Consolidated Trust. Everybody calls me Wayno. I'm the young man that saved the girl up on Liberty Heights that was hit by the bus. I'm here because I was one of the first youth work workers to work in, in the harbor. I worked in the Bay Lady, Lady Baltimore. I worked for the fudgery. I even worked for the one of the little Beanie Baby stands. The whole point of me being here is understanding, for everyone to understand the importance of the youth and the seniors being involved. If it wasn't for those summers at the inner harbor, where would I have been? When those opportunities were taken away from our community, I ended up in a life of crime and did almost 10 years in jail. And at the same time, I was the highest in my class, ranked athlete in the state. The whole point is for y'all to look at me today and see every kid out here could come right after that chain that one of the brothers was asking about. Said that we have an emerald chain. That chain will not last if our children do not last. We had these issues in Baltimore City because there's not enough opportunities, and I beg you all to include the youth in this development process. I don't care if we just bring the kids to watch y'all build. The things that I watched happen around the city changed my life, and it led me into the world of fiber optics. I also built the first 5G network in this company, in this country. The same guy that did almost 10 years in jail because of the opportunities that I had right here in the city that are taken away from our kids, we're finding jail cells instead of programs.
Thirty seconds.
I ask that you all think long and hard about the decisions that we make with our city, and make sure that you include our youth and include our seniors. I'm a prime example of that. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Wayno. Moving on, Maria Naviskia, Betsy Clark, Otis Raleigh, Rebecca Hoffberger.
Good afternoon. I'm Betsy Clark, and I'm speaking on behalf of Frances Landau.
Wasn't she just up here?
When planning major projects for public good, the great cities of the world undergo a well-known, time-tested process. The process starts with appointing a panel of urban planners and ordinary citizens to solicit input from the public to understand what the citizens want and their priorities. This panel is given the resources to solicit ideas from around the world on ways in which those wants and priorities might be provided. These ideas are presented back to the public for input and comment. The panel and city planners weigh the public input against costs, benefits, and risk of various ideas, and select the one or combination of the best ideas into a template that synthesizes an implementable project, addressing the public's desires. Only what then are developers brought into the process through a full and open competitive request for proposals. The citizens of Baltimore deserve this kind of process from our city leadership. Instead, the deeply flawed process that was resulted in the current MCB proposal can be summarized by the mayor asking a developer to provide a proposal for redevelopment of a rearred public space and then attempting to push the results into his own constituents. The citizens of Baltimore deserve better. They deserve more respect in believing that the results of such a deeply flawed process will be good for the city at its best a denial. The mayor has been critical of people who oppose MCB proposals. He asked why we didn't do something about the failing Harbor Place before he took his action. By his criticism, he is suggesting that a group of Baltimore
Ten seconds.
citizens who are guilty of of, guilty of, guilty of loving their city and most of whom volunteer various capacities in the neighborhood should in addition be paying their high taxes, raise the money necessary to implement the plan.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Albin Hoffberger, Madam Chair Middleton and Committee. Thank you for your time and your caring. These three bills are critical and will, if their passage will lay the foundation for big changes here in Baltimore, not just for our time, but for generations to come. Because this is primarily an economic committee, I really ask not so much against these bills, but that nothing be passed today until the many questions that have been brought up about an independent economic impact be made clear, of the traffic study, which also impacts our city economically and the people who live here in good faith. It has been brought up that there is some equivalency between the Harbor Place private lease ownership of the Rouse Company and what is proposed. But there, the air rights were part and given to the people of Baltimore. There was nothing that was owned above that 100 feet. This is what you're being asked to, to vote on today is unlimited. The number one group of people who are leaving our city are, by all studies, middle-class African-Americans, are, are black middle-class. I don't see anything in this plan that is aimed at ameliorating the life of middle-class people of any background, let alone poor. As to the incredibly articulate artists and entrepreneurs, their needs could be accommodated without the destruction but the retrofit in less time and less public money, less state money, by not penetrating the soil. And I think that we would have more room to promote that sincere creative entrepreneurship. Lastly, when you, I want it to be a wonderland. I want kids to be able to be excited to take their friends to it. I don't think they're going to look up at a tall tower and say, wow.
Wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up it to say that if you go to the National Harbor and you get on the Capitol Wheel, which is year-round, it only cost $1 million, and they paid it back within the first year of operation as it attracted over half a million. We should make that free to the children of Baltimore.
Thank you. Tapora, Taporia Bilinskian, sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. David Tofaro and John Murphy.
Is my clock running? My name is Tapora Bilazekian. I'm really happy to be here. I used to be a vendor in Harbor Place, back when Harbor Place was amazing. I come from working-class parents. My mother was a musician. I studied at Peabody. I've lived here for 57 years. That's how old I am. So I've seen everything change. I appreciate everything that the developers trying to do to bring back the economy in Harbor Place because we need our downtown to be fixed. However, to the equity argument, we're looking at a city that has 19% poverty rate, 19%. We're third in foreclosures in 2023, number three in the nation in foreclosures. We're 61% black, 30% white, and then we have a Hispanic population. The plan that you've seen and the designs that you've seen presented by MCB Real Estate will show you that the addition of park space that they're using as the equity argument for the withdrawal of 1.2 acres of public space away from us, from our public park space that's for us, for middle-class, working-class, and poor Baltimoreans, that space that they're offering to us is behind the buildings. It would be acquired if Pratt Street and Light Street were to be narrowed. So basically, MCB is saying, we're going to put the luxury elitist high-rises on the water, and you can sit behind the buildings on the green space next to the streets that are going to be a dead stop from the narrowing of the traffic. So you can breathe in fumes, have your picnic there, listen to a bus rumbling because you get to sit in the back. And the last time I checked, putting poor people in the back wasn't okay anymore. So I'm not really understanding the equity conversation in this development. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And just want to recognize Deputy Mayor J.D. Merrill from the mayor's office as well is with us.
Deputy Chief of Staff.
Oh, thank you. Deputy, Deputy Chief of Staff.
I would just like to say Rebecca Hoffberger, who spoke to people earlier, she's the founder and the director of the American Visionary Art Museum, and that, and attractions like that that brought, helped bring the Inner Harbor to them.
State your name, even though we all know you.
Chairperson Middleton, my name is David Tofaro, and I'm testifying against these bills. My background is as a urban planner. I received a joint degree in law and, and city planning from the University of Pennsylvania and moved here in 1973. My projects in Baltimore reflect my urban planning training. They include Waterloo Place on the historic Mount Vernon, Montgomery Park, Mount Vernon Mill, and White Hall, rehabilitated historic mills located along the Jones Falls and Hamden. All of these projects have been recipients of national or local design awards. The city has long abandoned the public planning process. The master plan adopted by the city 60 years ago embraced the planning principle that an energetic and active urban environment required a concentrated core represented by the Inner Harbor and the Central Business District. For the past 30 years, the city has done just the opposite by subsidizing development outside the CBD. John Patarakis, Inner Harbor East, Michael Beatty, Harbor Point, Kevin Plank, Port Covington, all well-connected large developers who received hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks and direct public subsidies. You may think these projects are great, but have they, have they been for our city? The fact is, they haven't. The CBD has been cannibalized and hollowed out. Constellation Energy moved from Pratt Street to Harbor Point. T-Roll Price is about to move its headquarters from Pratt to Harbor Point. Morgan Stanley could have been situated in the CBD instead of Harbor Point. Large law firms moved to Harbor East and Harbor Point. All the retail in Harbor East could have been in the CBD. Notwithstanding all these public subsidies, the net number of jobs, along with the population of the city, has declined. The MCB development plans would simply be the latest of the city's failed planning efforts funded by huge amounts of public monies. But once again, it will not do what the city officials would have you believe. In addition to decimating in our inner park, in our Inner Harbor Park, high-rise apartments, and this is important for council members to understand, will not activate the Inner Harbor. Apartments just doesn't, just don't do that. Public attractions like the National Aquarium and public amenities like waterfront-oriented eating places and shops do. Urban planners understand this. For those of you who don't, Jane Jacobs, I've got a copy of the cover of her book. I urgently recommend. She was the mother of modern planning.
Wrap up.
Nobody familiar with MCB's plans and the history of Harbor Place supports what this legislation will allow, other than those connected. Here's a partial list. Former council members Ricky Spector, George Dela, Carl Stokes, and Jody Landers. Carl Stokes couldn't be here today. He would take. Former housing commissioners Bob Embree, Jay Brody, Paul Graziano. Architects and planners David Den...
Time, time, time. Wrap it up real quick.
Steve Ziegler, Leon Bridges, Adam Gross, Scott Reichel, Janet Marie Smith and Lear. Economists Anubon Masu and Stephen Walters, Jimmy and Ted Rouse. Mayoral candidates Bob Wallace and Thoreau.
David, we got to end here. Dave.
Former, just some, if you give me, former developer or developers Bill Strever, Marty Azola, and Tom Bezuto. City council members need to listen to the wisdom of so many experienced knowledgeable voices who have contributed to Baltimore.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I would just like to ask your indulgence for one thing.
Thank you, Dave. No, we got to move on. I've been consistent.
Please let me state, Jay Brody.
John, um, Dave, John Murphy is your, you're here, you're next.
Jay Brody, former housing commissioner and head of BCD could not be here. Can I read his testimony?
No, you cannot. Everybody had two minutes, and I gave you more.
Predecessor to the current...
Thank you, thank you, thank you, David. Please.
Well, that suggests...
There's other people behind you. Thank you.
Jay Brody is one of the people, the voices that you should listen to.
Thank you, David.
Can I leave?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
It's my testimony. This is Jay Brody's testimony. Life and death of the great American cities.
Did you want to, is, you don't...
And this is the copy of the Baltimore Inner Harbor Restocking Plan.
Dave, you're directing to the committee, and we're, we got to move on. Thank you. It will all be part of the file. Thank you. John Murphy.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Middleton.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to tell you something that you haven't heard yet today. Perpetual means perpetual. Back in '79, you adopted a charter amendment and a law that said this park was created in perpetuity. This makes two major changes to this. It allows residential 900 units. It expands the development area from 3.2 to 4.5. Those basic changes violate the perpetuity language, which is written into the charter and the code. The open space character of Harbor Place did not come about by accident. This was designed from the beginning to be open space as contrast with the rest of the Inner Harbor development, which was very high density. It was designed by the preeminent planner of the day. When Rouse came along, they decided they would let Rouse in, but they decided, and the voters approved it, let Rouse in, the 3.2 acres, but no more. This was stated in perpetuity.
20 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Beth, Fred Shoken, and Michael Brassert, Brassert, Barbara Samuels, E. Evans, Paul.
Okay, hi, I'm Donna Beth Joy Shapiro. I'm a designer. I live in the Inner Harbor. I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore City. I don't want to repeat what other people said, so I'm just going to go under the hood a little bit of the MCB plan. So the comments are kind of disjointed, but bear with me. So the idea of lane reductions of already overburdened light in Pratt Streets really stunned me as much as the gigantic nature of the towers that would just loom over the promenade. Lane reductions, you know, you don't have to be Einstein to figure this out, would cause daily gridlock in the downtown area, lengthen travel times, worsen air quality, and yet negatively impact tourism. Next point, it's disingenuous to talk about what a tiny decrease in the footprint, square footage of the footprint, when the replacement buildings are going to be huge with many, 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 many times the amount of square footage and blocks, views blocked at the street level and from above. Number three, cutting out UDAP is wrong. They ask the right questions and give wise counsel, and I want to say it's the only thing I watch where I'm not frustrated that I, that I don't get to participate because they ask the questions that I would ask. So I know Mr. Bramble and MCB has been having a hard time at UDAP for the past couple hearings, and I want to know if UDAP is getting the X because they continue to harshly criticize the plan. Number four, what happens if the referendum passes, but the bill, excuse me, if the referendum does not pass, but the bills that would be changing the zoning and reducing the height restrictions pass? I didn't see anything in the language of the bills that said, well, they would then become null and void. So we all want to know the answer to that. Number five, people here have...
You got to wrap up.
People, well, I forgot to say I'm founder of the Inner Harbor, Inner Harbor for Everyone and a member of the Inner Harbor Coalition. People here think that the Inner Harbor is deserted. It's not. I spent time down there. I was just down there last weekend, Saturday and Sunday. It was full of families, having a great time on a beautiful sunny day. So it's not deserted, but Baltimore City has deserted it. So what happened to Light City? What happened to the Book Festival? What happened to all these wonderful things that the city used to provide that would draw, drive all that traffic there?
Could you wrap it up? Wrap it up, please.
I'm willing to bet that Fleet Street, that, excuse me, Fleet Week, it'll be packed down there.
Your time is up.
And then the last thing I want to say, I don't know one architect or planner who thinks MCB's plan is a good idea, but I want to say to Mr. Bramble, I think you're a decent man. I would be thrilled to support an MCB plan that we could all agree on, and that's the truth. And I want to shake your hand because that's how much I mean it.
Next. Thank you. State your name.
Yes, hi, my name is Fred Shoken. I'm a lifelong Baltimore City resident and live on the eastern edge of the Inner Harbor. These three city council bills fundamentally changed the legal status and the guiding principles that have created and maintained our Inner Harbor as the heart of our city, a public place for everyone. The three laws that will be changed, Article 1, Section 10 of the Baltimore City Charter enshrines the, enshrines the area between the World Trade Center and Rusty Scopper as an Inner Harbor Park. It allows space for the Maryland Science Center and the eating place and specialty shops of Harbor Place within its boundaries. It is the only public park in Baltimore that's specifically identified in the charter. One of the other laws that is being changed is the zoning code, which currently restricts this area to low-scale structures of 100 feet and to accommodate views of the harbor from adjoining areas. The Inner Harbor Project 1, or Renewal Area, currently limits the Pratt and Light Street pavilions of Harbor Place to commercial use and the height of 50 feet, and McKeldin Square to public use with no buildings. These regulations have allowed for Harbor Place to exist in a park-like environment. But these three city council bills will nullify these regulations and allow for a highly dense downtown mixed-use development in an area which is legally a public park for the benefit of this and future generations. Instead of a special public place, it remakes the centerpiece of the Inner Harbor into yet another private development, downtown development. I also wanted to point out that the Law Department has identified that Bill 230448 conflicts with the charter, which currently does not allow for residential uses or off-street parking within the Inner Harbor Park boundaries. The charter cannot be amended until the November 2024 election. Instead of passing a bill that cannot legally, that will not legally be binding until November, the city council should wait until after the election before proposing such changes.
Wrap up.
And only to do so if allowed by the voters. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Michael Brassert, and I have a prepared testimony, but I'm going to make it brief and talk a little bit about the elephant in the room. The issue here that we're kind of avoiding, we're getting caught in details, is land use. It's using this land for private use for high-rise apartment buildings. It's using this land for private use for high-rise apartment buildings. That's not what it was meant for, and office buildings. I've lived in Federal Hill, I live in Federal Hill. I've had a small business downtown for over twenty years. I've walked across the inner harbor over seventy-five-hundred times. We know that Harbor Place needs a lift. But I've, I've seen activation, I've seen how areas have been activated. I grew up on the lower west side of Manhattan, and I saw the West Side Hudson Park in nineteen-eighty-eight. Ten years later, it had fourteen million visitors. Then came the High Line, eight million visitors. No high-rise apartment buildings, no businesses, just an open space to walk a little closer to the sky. You know, all of this activated the, the area just east of the Hudson River, my neighborhood. And I, I truly believe that high-rise apartment buildings and office buildings are dead zones. I'm a New Yorker. I've lived there. They're dead areas. If you, if you preserve public space, you'll activate downtown, you'll activate Federal Hill, you'll activate the areas west of Harbor Place.
Wrap it, start wrapping up.
I really support that. Sometimes Baltimore makes mistakes. The Old Town Mall comes to mind. And I'm sure that in just a few years, we'll look back at this Harbor Place plan, if it's built, and realize that we had just made a one-billion-dollar preventable horrible mistake because as a city, we had not done our due diligence. We went with the only option presented to us. I urge you, don't sell our soul. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Samuels. I'm just testifying as an individual, and I submitted a written testimony yesterday. I want to highlight a couple of things in my testimony based on what I've heard today. First, over and over again, we've heard, it's too early. We're at the beginning. It's too early to have this answer and that answer. And I would agree. It is too early to be passing these bills without that information. What we would be doing in passing these bills is to be giving a blank check for development without the answers. We would be giving the developer development rights that he does not own. Yes, he owns a, the remaining term of a ground lease on the Harbor Park pavilions, but that's all he owns. He does not own air rights. He does not own the additional acreage he's looking for. He does not own, and he did not buy, the right to develop residential apartments or towers. We've also heard, oh, and by approving this legislation now, the council is basically giving up any leverage that the city will have to negotiate a community benefits agreement or any other leverage it would have over what happens with this development. And this development, the pretty pictures you see now, is not gonna be how it evolves. What you see now is probably as pretty as it gets, because it's usually just downhill from the initial renderings. So, we should not be giving up leverage. We should not be giving up valuable development rights that have a monetary value that belongs to the public. It's the public. Secondly, we've heard that state law means that residential use is permitted here as a commercial use. The, the state law has never cited. There are plenty of provision, definitions in state law for commercial that specifically exclude residential uses. So, that, I think, is a little bit of gaslighting that we've heard today. Secondly, the idea that this is not a project-specific zoning change. This is gonna change C-five-I-H. The core of C-five-I-H is Harbor Place, also a little bit to the sides, which should actually concern us if we're, if we're removing the height limits on, on those areas, too. But this is targeted to a specific development. Don't try, no one should try to tell us otherwise.
Wrap up?
Sure. This is not a zoning bill. This is a charter amendment. Yeah, there's a zoning bill in here. But this is a charter amendment, and it needs to get full deliberation by the council. And finally, this idea that it's too early, we don't know, pretending that this is not gonna cost us four to five-hundred million, that is lunacy. Of course, it's gonna cost a lot of money.
Thank you, thank you.
And the developer should be required to contribute to those costs because they are integral to the success of the project. Thank you.
Evan Paul? Caroline Spinello? Dr. Drunkman? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, members of the committee. My name's Abbott Bolte. I'm a lifelong Baltimoreian. Believe it or not, I grew up, I waitressed on the Nobscu, which was a boat in the inner harbor before the pavilions were there. I watched, and as I did that, I watched them finish the aquarium. And I've been living in Baltimore ever since. I live three blocks from the harbor at this point, and I love it. And I've got to say, you guys are at a crucial moment. This is historical. This is, has not happened since those pavilions, and you guys are in the seat. You're gonna make this historic decision about what's gonna last for the next fifty years. I think it's, it's thrilling, and I love that sail building. I think that's really cool-looking. But to just pass a law that says, we like this, so yes, build as high as you want, we'll give away the airspace. To do what? To move four-fourteen Light Street one block closer and then repeat it, and then repeat it again? Well, how is that original? You guys have a chance to be original. You guys have a chance to be talked about the way Rouse is talked about, and you're giving it away so quickly without enough thought. Please think about this, because you're in the chair. All we can do is talk, but you're in the chair. You're gonna make this decision. Are you gonna be like Rouse? Are you gonna go, what's original? The SEAL building's original. Love it. A bunch of apartment buildings? There's nothing original. Why would you come to Baltimore? To see apartment buildings? I don't know what the answer is. I'm a nurse. I'm not an architect. But I do know that it's, this is not gonna make people say, let's get to Baltimore. They have a new apartment building. It's just not. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Caroline Speechely. I live in Fels Point. I've lived here all my life, twenty-five years, and I would like to speak today about my concerns regarding, as we've been saying, all these questions that still need to be answered. It seems like there's a lot of unknowns, and before we pass bills that are going to alter our city charter, we should probably know a little bit more about this. In particular, I think I want to highlight the, the apartment buildings. In sixty-seven, that land that, that is going to be annexed here, it was protected. It was meant to be a park, and parks are for everyone, not just for people who can afford to live in luxury apartments, which I certainly can't. So, I, I invite the council to really think hard about this. Make sure that we are sure. Because the charter, yes, it is meant to be, it is meant to grow with the times. It's not meant to be static. I, we all understand that. But have the times changed? Do we really want skyscrapers right on the waterfront? Let's be sure about this, because this is exciting. Harbor Place is a really big deal. It's right in the heart of the city. Let's be sure. Thank you.
One more time with Dr. Drunkman? And then we'll go with Leah Jackson?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate being able to do this. I was, I was-
State your name for the public.
My name is Lair Jackson. And I'm a developer and city planner. I was fortunate when I got out of the Marine Corps. Jim Rouse offered me a job for seven-thousand dollars a year, and everybody said I was crazy for taking it and not going to New York for the big bucks. But I did, and I loved it. I hate malls, and I got to work with local people. I got to work with farmers, and I got to develop new concepts. We, we built the first food court in the United States nineteen-seventy. Built the first pushcart market in America at Faneuil Hall Marketplace to mask undeveloped space for opening. And I probably developed one of the top twenty restaurants in America, and I rebuilt three of the great train stations in America. Union Station in Washington, Thirty Street Station in Philadelphia, and Grand Central. So, I feel uniquely qualified, because while I was at the, the Rouse Company, working on Faneuil Hall, we planned Harbor Place, and we fought about it. And we fought with all the local architects and the Philadelphia architects. And I think it's, it came out of the chute, those three pavilions. In Ben Thompson's image, were these three great pavilions in the south of England, you know, holding court. And I still think they're great-looking. They may be, they may need a little paint. They may need a little paint, but the magic's in the merchants. It's not the architecture. I hate to say this with architects wrapped around me, but I believe it. You put good merchants in old buildings. We did it in, you know, Quincy Market, you know. We, we built buildings in Israel, in Jerusalem. They were four-hundred years old. Retail. Nothing wrong with the buildings. Anyway, that's my story. I'm sticking with it.
Thank you. Gary Bowden? Is Gary Bowden here? The last name is Fitz, Fitzsimmons? Can't get the writing in for the first name. Fitzsimmons? Nick Harrinder? Nick Harrinder? Michael Harrison? Yes. And Pete Collier after this, next. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michael Hurston Jr. I'm a Baltimore-born recreational entertainment visionary and nonprofit owner. Today, I'm an invited guest of the Inner Harbor Coalition. I'm sharing my personal thoughts on why the current plans for the inner harbor won't work and must not be used. The Harbor Place used to be full of life. When the food court started to disappear for things like Ripley's Believe It or Not, I knew that a disaster was looming. The Super Bowl was just played in Las Vegas. You could see from the aerial drone shots how things were lit up and alive in Vegas. That should be an aspiration for Baltimore. We are sitting here talking about how we can't build but so far up in the air at the inner harbor, can't build but so many things, and can't be but so bold. That's why Baltimore is in decline. There is too much red tape when you want to do great things in Baltimore City. Why can't we get rid of some of this red tape and just make the inner harbor like Las Vegas or International Drive in Orlando, Florida? Anybody who is listening to this, please do me a favor and Google International Drive Orlando. Then ask yourself, why can't Baltimore's inner harbor be better than International Drive in Orlando? Why can't we find a happy medium to build in a bold way that creates jobs and true entertainment for all of us to enjoy? I am extremely disappointed with the proposal for apartments at the inner harbor. More apartments will do nothing to enhance the lives of average Baltimoreans. There are dozens of liquor stores and abandoned buildings that can be torn down and used for overly expensive apartments. There are no places to use the restroom, get warm, or even recharge your phone after seven PM downtown. This should be one of dozens of things to consider for the inner harbor. There is nothing exciting for teenagers, young adults, or any one of us to do in terms of twenty-first century recreation in the entire city of Baltimore, including downtown. That is pathetic. More apartments and green spaces is a disaster. Plain and simple. We need recreation type of entertainment immediately. Again, there is nothing exciting to do in Baltimore. The status quo has failed Baltimore for over forty years. More apartments and green spaces is a status quo. We need true entertainment to get lost in and have fun. Thank you.
Steve Dorham? Jody Landers? Jer- Jermaine Jones?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
My name is Jody Landers, and it's nice to be back in this chamber. I only come down once in a while, but anyway, you know, I'm among some of the people who are in this chamber who well remember when we passed the Harbor Place Charter Amendment. And we did so on the promise that that space would forever remain as open space. Just like we heard today, the good councilmen say, "We promise, we are not gonna go beyond this line in developing any additional commercial space on top of the public, the public and park space that's already been dedicated." The receivership for Harbor Place did not happen because there's a lack of residential development on the public space. It happened because of mismanagement and a lack of public oversight and a lack of public investment in those kinds of activities. There's a big, big difference between the retail and restaurant spaces that are permitted under the original amendment and in Harbor Place, and that only survive because of public participation than what's being proposed here today, which is essentially the conversion of public open space to private residences that don't survive because of public participation or public traffic. They survive because they're private spaces. I, I'm actually confounded by the-
Twenty-second.
-comment that the council for the developer made about not asking for city funds, as if removing the height restrictions, removing the parking prohibition, and a no-bid lease to build private residences on park, parkland is not an expenditure of public capital. There's more to public funds than just public money. What about open space? What value does that bring to the city, and why would we be spending it willy-nilly? The footprint decrease argument is also very misleading, because parkland is not just the surface footprint. It's the airspace above it and the open areas and the landscaping around it. So, we should be cognizant of that, too. It's not just a, 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 one acre or one percentage of an acre for another. You're losing public open space and public parkland. We should be investing-
Time, time-
-money in restoring public and, and reinvigorating public spaces. This, last comment. Let's do an analysis of why the current Harbor Place failed before we give away this public open, open space. Thank you.
Uh, is Jermaine Jones here? Ke- Keenan? DeWarkin? Okay. Sorry. You, come on up.
Hi, my, hello. Hi, my name is Keenan DeWark Fisher, and I am a longtime resident of the area near the harbor. Was, lived in Federal Hill for about twelve years and about another ten years now in Otterbine. My wife and I have really, really enjoyed living in the city, and I like a lot of the, I really enjoyed listening to all the, the people who have spoken that, that live here, but also appreciate all the hard work that the, all the experts that the city employs that really put into this, as well as, as the, the development team. And I really just came here, I, I don't have a lot extra to add, but I came to give you guys a pep talk. This, this project is, is not just the private project. There's, there's two parts to the project. There's the, the private buildings, there's apartment buildings, and that's not even really a very exciting part of the project. When you look at the, the developer's stuff, what's exciting is the promenades. What's exciting is narrowing the, 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 um, the traffic down to two lanes, but then having a plan for where's the traffic gonna go. That means public investment. We need public investment to redevelop the, the promenades, to provide public transportation that you see. You know, you see the red line in the pictures, right? But we need a plan to do all this stuff. Just putting a, a new mall down there and just putting, um- Just putting a new mall down there and just putting apartment buildings or another, a new promenade that's going a different, a new pavilion that goes a different direction, that's not what's gonna revitalize the Inner Harbor. What is gonna revitalize the Inner Harbor is a real solid plan.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. And when I heard the Finance Committee say, "Well, we just, we just, you know, haven't thought about what it's gonna cost, or what the benefits are gonna be, we'll figure that out later." That's missing the whole point. We need to be thinking about the big picture. What are the investments gonna be? Where are the investments gonna come from? And what are the benefits to the city gonna be? If we're not thinking about those things, and we're just thinking about the private development, then I'd rather just not do it.
And the last person that's signed up, Leslie Johnson. Is Leslie here?
I signed up.
Who is saying they signed up? You might have, if you signed up, your name would be on the list. Any final testimony? Can you please get in line? Stop right there. Anybody else that is present, that has not testified, that would like to testify, stand up and get in line, and I'll give you your two minutes. I don't want any back and forth. Just get in line.
She can't stand. She's handicapped. She's handicapped. She needs to come up when she's ready.
You can't, you walked in, you can't come up further?
She can't stand there.
Oh, gotcha.
She has to come up when she's ready.
Which one? Can we, can, would you like the mic brought to you?
She just doesn't wanna stand and wait.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Yes, young lady, you can come on up. Yes. Come close and come to the mic and-
Hi, my name is Ms. Johnson.
Go to, closer to the mic. Thank you.
And I want to say that I've been at Harbor Place for 30 years. Rouse, GGP, and Acheonica. And now, Mr. Brambleton, I wish him the best, okay? I am so proud and happy for Harbor Place to be more successful. I seen the good days, and I seen the bad days. I seen that the gallery mall that we loved, four floors of entertainment, shopping, and food, now they locked it up. You can't go in there, okay? Because of some little crime, okay? Our biggest crime at the Inner Harbor is that they allow bicycles on the red brick. The red brick is made for wheelchairs, strollers, and people walking. We have a bike lane in front of the Cheesecake Factory, but the red brick is behind the Cheesecake Factory. If y'all could stop the bicycles from the red brick, it'll cut the crime totally. I am happy and pleased. There is so much lakes and waters in Baltimore that they could build pavilions for people to have picnics and take their children. Harbor Place is corporate, okay? And Harbor Place needs to be treated as corporate. If they wanna build a lot of stuff there, I'm sure whoever's building it will build it nice, because Harbor Place now is too little. We could use bigger pavilions there, upstairs. And I'm confident that everyone here is going to make the right decision and say yes to all the developers that want to make Harbor Place successful again, because we got the conventioneers, we got everybody. And I'm happy to be here today, and I know we're going to make Harbor Place great again.
Thank you for your testimony. Young lady, you can come on up now, if you'd like. You have two minutes. Miss, I think you're Ms. Seltzer? You can state your name, and you have two minutes.
Those who don't know the history are doomed to repeat it. Mark Twain said, "Ten thousand river commissions with all the mines of the world at the-"
Ms. Seltzer, state your name first for the record.
Are you gonna start the time again?
Sure, go ahead. You'll get-
Michelle Seltzer, I live in Liberty Square. Those-
Go ahead.
Are you gonna start?
Go ahead.
"Ten thousand river commissions with all the mines of the world at their back cannot tame that lawless stream, cannot curb it or confine it, cannot say to it, 'Go here or go there and make it obey.'" Absolutely no. There is no plan. Unfortunately, people that work for the government, they have to choose whether they keep their job or actually have a conviction and, and say no. This is what I believe is happening. Nobody can say no to you, to you, to Mayor Scott, et cetera. So all due to lack of global crisis plan implementation and sunny day flooding, sea level rising, Baltimore being the ninth hottest urban heat island, wet bulb rise, ecosystem and biological annihilation, especially mammal population, cannot have dessert when not have main course. And main course is alarming, calling for only those who have the decorum and morals to heed such daunting work. I fear my words will, will continue to fall on dead ears, especially since testifying at hearings for nearly two, two years about these parsing issues. There pretty much must be a completely different infrastructure than there is today in order for Baltimore to be viable, for a livable future. Addressing global crisis starts with transportation, canals, and rail, which are not dependent on asphalt, and shutting down toxic air, ash, air polluting in center in incinerator briscoe. So I have a written testimony. So, okay. So imagine, imagine, main, main outdoor space to be designed by Baltimore Native American Center with partners, must be historically represent every crisscross family, tribe, and nation that ever dwelled on Baltimore, incorporates Trail of Tears and Oklahoma Native Exburts, Bureau of Indian Affairs, to plan adequate ritual space, permanent fixtures and sculptures, Tomans, Wharves of the Basin, that's what it's called. The harbor is the Wharves of the Basin.
Ms. Seltzer, I've, you've got, I've given you extra time.
You didn't give me-
You can say one more sentence, if, after that, you have to stop, so we can move on. Okay?
Okay. This is sacred land, and the indigenous people must be recognized. And the slaves, the African slaves came here, the ones that survived were shackled up, and we have our own Trail of Tears, it's called Pratt Street, and they were all over. And what happened was this thing Harbor Place was all whitewashed, and we must, and I have a plan.
Thank you.
And water wheel.
We got your testimony. Thank you. Thank you.
According to the peace resolution in 2001.
Thank you.
I only have one, so we're gonna have to do it-
You can give us that one. That'd be, that'd work. Is there anyone else behind, this gentleman is behind you that wants to come up? Is that the last person? This one gentleman that's coming up now is our last public testimony. Thank you. And you have two minutes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the Council and Committee. My name is Peter Jackson, born and raised in Baltimore. I grew up with a unique appreciation for what Harbor Place meant for this city. Although the project's opening may have predated my birth, I spent my youth not only patronizing its shops with my family, but surrounded by many of the people who brought it to life in the first place. My father, who spoke earlier, was a Rouse Company alum, who cut his teeth at Faneuil Hall, the first of the festival marketplaces, and later at Harbor Place itself. I attribute summertime visits to the home of Ben Thompson and the time spent with him building paper cities as a formative part of my own fascination with the urban-built environment. Today, my wife and I are proud residents of the 11th District, and that childhood interest has led me to a career at JLL, where I work in commercial real estate exclusively in downtown Baltimore. For decades, Harbor Place was the centerpiece of a resurgent CBD, attracting locals and tourists alike, but it's been in a 20-year state of gradual decline marked by mismanagement and disinvestment, while local and global forces have continued to reshape the city around it. The office-market center of gravity has shifted south and east towards newer development, while the pandemic has changed the way we work and the spaces that we look for to work in. This has suffocated downtown retail, all the while generational changes have made Baltimore's downtown its fastest-growing residential district. These are seismic shifts in the way we approach downtowns that could never have been imagined at the time of Harbor Place's opening in 1980. What was once downtown's greatest asset, its crown jewel, has since weighed down on the fortune of the city. A simple look at some statistics highlight how drastic this need is. I'll try and be quick here. Our office rates 20% vacant, and it's gonna rise to historic highs later this year. Our tax assessments are falling as sale prices fall. Total office demand is half of what, maybe half of what it was.
Twenty seconds.
What was that?
Twenty seconds.
Oh, thank you. An office-to-residential conversions, while gaining popularity in other urban markets, are running out of steam in Baltimore, but we still need more housing. I don't say this to be grim, but to highlight the massive needs for such a new catalytic investment in Baltimore's Inner Harbor to spur the next several decades of growth and reinvestment, just like Harbor Place did in 1980. I applaud MCB for stepping up and laying out the solution that downtown Baltimore needs today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, as we, before, the sponsor of these bills give some final remarks. I just want to, first of all, thank the committee, number one, for staying on. We've been going on since 2 o'clock, it's now going on 7:00. I want to thank all the people that came in person and sat here also through, since 2 o'clock, or even got here at 1:00 and some at 12:00. You're showing your love and concern as we move forward and revitalize not just our individual districts, but just your love and concern for Baltimore. And all the testimony has been, been taken seriously. I do want you to know that. I know that the developer and owners are, have been listening as well and, and taking notes and, and listening to everything, but this is still like the beginning of the process. It's the beginning of the process. The real beginning started when you, we did have, the sponsor did go out in the community. It's been, this was introduced back in October. So on that note, I'll stop here and let our sponsor and councilperson of the 11th District give some final remarks. Some of it will probably be on some of the statements that were made for testimony, and just for clarification, and then we'll move to the next step.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank all of our city agencies and everyone who came out to testify today. Many of you have been engaged in this process for a number of months, and my sincere hope is that you're gonna continue to remain engaged. Your participation in this process, the feedback that you've provided, has helped driven what's been proposed, and I think is going to continue to drive what's been proposed. So with that, I'll yield back my time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do committee members have any final comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to recommend or approve the amendment?
I have a quick comment.
Councilman Bullock, comment.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the council. Thank you for everybody who came out today. I just wanted to say, I thought it was a useful conversation for us to have. We had folks who came here and made references to some literature from, from years past, particularly with Jane Jacobs. And I'll say, as a, as a planner, some of you know my masters in city and regional planning, and so it was good to hear some references to planning. But one of the things we also do recognize is that that text from 1960s also makes reference to a time period where our cities were looked at as afterthought. Oftentimes, highways being run through our, our neighborhoods, the loss of population out to our suburbs. And as we look forward into time now, we're looking at, how do we revitalize our neighborhoods and our communities? We know that planning is not always an easy process, and it's important to hear from people on both sides of the issue. So I'll say, there were some very valid points that were raised. At the same time, we recognize that there are some great opportunities in front of us, and we don't have all the answers today, but I think we have a framework and a process in terms of moving forward. So I do thank those who have been diligent in this process, those who have come and asked those questions, and I think we've gotten some, some good direction today, and I think we're ready to move forward. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Member Bullock. Any other comments or questions? Council, is, Member Dorsey?
Thank you. Yeah, it was prescient to see the Jane Jacobs book, The Death and Life of Great American Cities, brought up, I think within 30 seconds of the book coming to mind. There's a particular phrase in it, catastrophic investment is one that comes to mind, that I was thinking about. Really well-intentioned things and well-argued things, having unintended consequences, comes to mind. This book was actually written, as Doc Bullock over there said, "at a time when highways were being plowed through cities," but in a direct response to that, recognizing how problematic that was, how destructive that was. And we've known for a long time, I think, I don't know, we, anybody who has thought about the failings of Harbor Place as it is today, has thought about how deleterious to its success Pratt Street and Light Street and the Calvert Street Spur are as highway-like conditions that cut off the harbor from other places. This is specifically what this book was, was responding to. New York City being taken over by highway building that cut off its waterfront from the rest of the city and the rest of kind of human existence in those spaces. And it's a mistake that wasn't just made in Baltimore on Light Street and Pratt Street, but was made in New York, was made in Philadelphia, was made in virtually every great American city that has any waterfront to speak of. You know, I'm so thankful to see a plan here that, that starts to show what, what we need to do with those spaces, right? The other document that was brought up, this Baltimore Inner Harbor 2.0, while wonderful in certain respects, including the elimination of the, the Calvert Street Spur, even when this was put together by the Waterfront Partnership back in 2013, it still retained a recommendation of the highway-like conditions on Pratt Street and Light Street. I'm happy to see that, that, you know, anybody in this city, anybody who is seeking to invest and, and make change in this city, is recognizing how disastrous those roads are to the Harbor Place. And I think that that's the most important part of this project. I think that's the most important and most, you know, valuable piece of the proposal here at this point. And I think that the city should have been making changes to that a long time ago and leading the way to make changes. I think that we're long past the point where we should have come up with funding and a plan to actually do those things ourselves, regardless of what else happens on the harbor park space. And, and I think that, that failing to put that first, it's just everything else is premature, and that's what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, now we're going to, committee before you, we, I, you have before you amendments for two of the bills. The first one was 23-0444, that's the Charter Amendment, Inner Harbor. Is there a motion to recommend the amendment favorable? So moved. Oops, sorry.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to clarify, that's the two amendments, correct?
Correct.
Amendment one and two on that page.
Amendment one and two on that page?
Correct. Yes, one and two on that page for Bill 23-0444 only. And we had the, that was moved by Stokes and second by Conway. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway is a yes. Dorsey? This is for the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes.
The Law Department's amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. I wanna be very clear that I'm happy to support these amendments, because I think that if we're gonna give away the farm, we might as well do it with some guardrails. Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable with the amendment for Bill Number So moved by Stokes. Is there a second? Second by, was that Conway? Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway is a yes. Dorsey?
I will reserve my comments on the three bills until the third of them is being voted. I will vote no, and just leave it at that for now.
So you said no, okay. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
I also need to reserve my comments for the last bit, but I'll do yes on this one.
Yes, and Stokes is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Bill Number 23-0446, zoning, and this one does not have amendments. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable? So moved by Glover. Is there a second? Middleton, second. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Stokes. This bill moves to second reader at the next council meeting. And then, Bill Number 23-0448, the Urban Renewal Project, Inner Harbor Project One, Amendment 21, does have amendments, has, that's the one with the four amendments. Do I have a motion to move those amendments for that bill? So moved by Stokes. Second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey?
No.
No, for Dorsey. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Those amendments move. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable with the amendments? So moved by Stokes. Second by Conway. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna explain my vote. Most of, I guess what needs to be said has already been, I'm just gonna reiterate much of what we've heard from others. First of all, I wanna acknowledge all the leadership that it took to bring Harbor Place to be what it was 40 years ago. There's a wonderful documentary on it called Global Harbors that really cannot fail to instill some respect for the level of public process and the years of deliberate stewardship that went into making Harbor Place the real success that it was. I'm not, by comparison to most people, and I would say probably even most of this council, I'm wildly, wildly pro-development. You know, I have no problems at all with height restrictions or anything like that. You know, and I'm not preoccupied with people's views and things like this as something that should stand in the way of new development. I like Dave. I like, everybody likes Dave. I respect Dave and his love of Baltimore and the value of investments that he makes here, and, you know, clearly respect, Dave has a right to redevelop on the site that he, you know, took the initiative to go and have the rights to develop on. But the expanse between what has been presented to the public and what these bills would allow is vast. It's huge. I've seen renderings. As somebody said before, the renderings are always the best possible portrayal of what, you know, we, you know, gets us watery-eyed or something. But there's so much room for what could possibly happen, and I just think, again, the proposal and the plan and the renderings, it revolves around two fundamentally separate forms of investment. One, the private investment that these bills allow, it kinda just takes the rails off. And then the public investment, which is so clearly and sorely lacking, and I think it's irrefutable that we need to shrink down these roads and get rid of this Calvert Street Spur, and that we need to reinvest in the promenade, and that it is the government's responsibility to make that happen. We, the government, should be doing this. It's a failure of our own city leadership that we haven't already done this. We should be so much farther along in that process by now. We are not planning. That's a problem for us as a city and for all the people who live in this city. To take the rails off of the private development that can happen on Harbor Place before the city leadership, before the government endeavors to take away the known barriers to Harbor Place's success, is the absolute quintessence of putting the cart before the horse. What we're doing here today, voting on these bills, is so unbelievably premature in my book. I respect everybody's work that's gone into getting where this is today, but it's just simply not enough. There was so much work to make Harbor Place what it was and a success, and this just pales by comparison.
May we have your vote, please?
Yeah, that I should be cut off in my remarks at 40 years after this thing was originally brought into being is a perfect portrayal of what's wrong with the process that has taken place here. No.
Councilman Glover?
I'd like to explain my vote. It took me a lot of time to get to reach my decision. Took a lot of thinking, a lot of conversation with my community, and I sit back and I think about this young man that was born and raised in East Baltimore Chapel Hill projects, and every day, you know, friends from our neighborhood would walk down to the harbor, a place where we felt like it was the shine of our city. We would love to go down there and take Polaroid pictures and fan them and show everybody how beautiful the harbor was. And then it got into a point where businesses had left the harbor and no longer that we wanted to go down to the harbor to see the beautifications of our city. It was only when it was time to light our fireworks on the Fourth of July, or maybe to celebrate the New Year, or Ravens playoff, win or Super Bowl. But I also thought about this young man by the name of Dave Bramble that, you know, came back to Baltimore, lived here in Baltimore, has not forgotten where he could come from. And also, I look at a man where my young boys could look up to him and say, you know what, we have finally seen someone that looked like us, that wanna share wealth and share the opportunity for young boys, black boys, in the city of Baltimore. And that's what I see with him. So now, as I cast my vote, I say thank you for the opportunity to allow my boys to see greatness in our city, and also seeing that you coming back home, you still live here in our neighborhood, and you will make a change in an area, again, which when I was a young boy, would take a Polaroid picture and fan that picture to show, you know, the world how beautiful Baltimore was, and I'm ready to bring it back to where it once was before. So that's the reason why I cast my vote, say yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna say a couple of things. One is, I appreciate the commitment that the development team and Mr. Bramble have to Baltimore. They've, you know, made a commitment, not only because of the requirement for inclusionary, because we have one now, thanks to everybody here, but to try to do more. I worry about a couple of things. One is, I worry about the fact that we, that there was a master planning process, that we didn't have one this time, and I think a lot of people felt like they wanted to have a lot more input. I know that there were a lot of community meetings, and I appreciate you doing that. You know, we just hadn't seen sort of the evolution of that work, we just saw a plan come out of it. Also, I wanna make sure it's very clear that, you know, that the harbor is not just a place for people to come and then that's it, right? And I think we've talked about this. We need to have a place where people come to Baltimore and then explore the rest of it, right? I hate that stupid Hard Rock Cafe guitar, because to me, it means just stay in the harbor and don't go to the rest of the city. And I think that we need this project to be the one, one of the many places across the city where people come, and I'm very hopeful that we can, that we can do that with this project. I know we've talked a lot about it with the work at the convention center as well, I think, left already. So I think it's just really important that we really look at, also, I'm disappointed that we didn't have this opportunity to have a benefits agreement or some MOU about, you know, what else the city would be able to do and to get as a result of our votes. And I think that that has to be something that we all do. I do that in my district for all of the projects that I work on, and I'm hopeful that we can get to a place where we have that kind of process. I voted yes on the charter amendment because I think it's important that the voters have an opportunity to weigh in. I voted yes on the height because I think that we can get a lot more opportunity with that, and I, despite my concerns about this, I also wanted to just say one more thing in that earlier in the hearing, we were told that there might be, in the URP, it talks about in two places where there's a requirement for UDAP, and then that there would be something different that would replace that, and that, I guess, is not the case. It's not in these amendments. So I just wanted to also make that, make that clear, that that wasn't the case. I really, really, really wanna make sure that there is this commitment to, and that the mayor's office and our council hold the development team accountable for their promises. And I think it's a very, this is just a very difficult process to go through without having all of the time to look at everything, including, like, I printed out the urban renewal plans, I could see everything that we were considering here. So I am Team Baltimore. I wanna make sure that, you know, we have an opportunity to make this work. I have a lot of other goals that I need to accomplish and I would like to accomplish, and many of us would like to accomplish, across the city, and we need a commitment for those as well. So I will vote yes on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for our vote. I wanna just mention, I remember when the harbor first opened up, you had a lot of black business down there. You go down there now, they got ran out of there, because I was living on Preston Street. My mother raised eight kids and two sets of twins. Mr. Bramble, we gonna give young black men and young black women, say, you can do that also, but the difference is, we gonna create a pipeline for our young people so they can go down to the inner harbor and see how they build, how you become a developer, how you become a homeowner, how you can start your own business. That's great in this city. We missing the whole point. We talking about what was there before? That's old stuff. We have to create, not just a tourist attraction, but we have to create something for our young people. Because you know what? I work with We Rise program. We go over to the jail and talk to them young men. Do you know some of them young men, we took them down to inner harbor? You know what they said? It's not for us, and I didn't even know where it was at. This gives them an opportunity to see somebody that looked like me can do the same thing as anybody else to do in this city. So I vote yes.
One nay and one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, this bill will move to second reader. And again, I know that there's gonna be more community input. This is, this is the beginning of the process, and I know that the organization of this private land is committed to this city and that area, and I trust that they're going to move in the right direction. They've stayed here and listened, again, through the, through all of the testimony, and taking notes and taking all this in. So again, I thank you all for everything that you have done, from the agencies on to the people in these communities, and again, moving on to the next level, and this committee is adjourned.